Led by Elizabeth.
I pledge allegiance.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Just want to remind everybody that our meeting is being recorded. If you are online and listening to us, please mute yourselves. It cuts down on the feedback among all of us, so would appreciate that. We start with open forum, and I have a series of announcements that I just want to make and go over for folks. The first one is town meeting. Remind everybody that town meeting is Saturday, June 20th at 9:00 a.m. at the Westford Academy Fields. Most people, I hope, received their postcard in the mail today. If not, you should get it tomorrow or the day after. For anybody who was watching our meeting two weeks ago, where we discussed whether or not we could move town meeting from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., we did reach out to town council, and town council advised us that, under Massachusetts general law, the Board of Selectmen does have the authority to change the time. And for that reason, and in order to deal with weather issues and heat, we have decided and determined to start the meeting at 9:00 a.m. As you will see, if you look online or if you look at your postcard, we have abbreviated the warrant to 18 articles. And so we hope that we'll be able to get through the 18 articles in, you know, in an appropriate amount of time. We've streamlined the agenda. I believe eight of the 18 articles, we're going to propose or put on the consent agenda. Obviously, if anybody wants one of those articles off the consent agenda, they can take it off the consent agenda. And so it is our hope that we'll be able to have an efficient and expeditious town meeting, while at the same time dealing with all of the critical town issues that we need to deal with right now. So, and the only other thing, I believe, and Jody, please tell me, I think online, in terms of how town meeting is going to work and where people are sitting, and how you get into town meeting, there is a diagram online that will outline that for folks. So you can go to the town's website and check out that diagram, which will tell you how to proceed and where to sit and where the shade is and where there are chairs for couples, and where the boards and the committees and where microphones will be located. So that's town meeting. In anticipation of town meeting on Thursday, this Thursday, June 11th, the town, in conjunction with the League of Women Voters, is going to be holding a virtual town meeting and a warrant review at 7:00. And that will be done remotely, live remotely. And it will also be recorded for folks who can't join us at 7:00 on Thursday to tune in afterwards and to take a look at that in anticipation of town meeting. If you want to submit questions for that pre-meeting, there is, again, a form online that you can submit your question, and that question will be submitted and will be asked and answered during our virtual town meeting. Then I want to remind everybody once again that elections are June 30th. Everybody's being encouraged to vote by mail-in ballot. You can apply for your mail-in ballot by email, mail, fax to the town clerk's office. It will be sent to you, and then you need to return it to the town clerk's office again, either by mail, or there's a drop box outside town hall in which you can drop your ballot in. And then two other announcements. So since we last met two weeks ago, there are a couple of events that have occurred in town that we would just like to acknowledge. First of all, last Friday should have been graduation for our seniors from Westford Academy. And while certainly it's not the graduation that all of you expected, anticipated, and hoped for, we would like to say congratulations to all of our academy's seniors. It's certainly going to be a graduation that you're going to be talking about for years to come, and that you can say you were a part or not a part of. So we wish all of you the best in your future endeavors and in your ongoing journeys. We hope that everybody in town, or most people in town, were able to go by the common and see the photographs of all our seniors that were, that lined our common for the week. And we wish all of you the best. And then finally, while we were away, I believe last week was Emergency Medical Services Recognition Week. And while it is a week late, the board would like to recognize our EMS personnel, their dedication, their commitment, not only during this time of COVID-19, but for all they do for us in the town. Many of us, including myself, have had to call on EMS in the past for assistance and can only comment on with the professionalism, the dedication, and the commitment with which they serve our town. We are very, very fortunate to have such a professional group of people here as our EMS folks. And so while we are a week late, we do want to say thank you for everything that you do here for all of us in the town. And so those are all my announcements, and I don't know if anybody else has any. Tom?
So Westford Community Access Television has been a great partner through this difficult time, helping us stay connected, and it's brought us many, many events. And this weekend, through Sunday, there's a special auction that's being run to help provide a little bit of extra support to the great work they're doing. If you just Google "Westford Community Access Television," right at the top, you'll see an auction banner. You can click on that, and if anything looks good to you, please offer your support. There's just a lot to do right now, and it's an important time, and we're all stretched to make the resources work. So if you can do that, please do. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for open forum? Okay, moving right along to our 7:05 p.m. item, which is a continued public hearing concerning the potential nuisance dangerous dogs. If folks remember, this is a continuation from, I believe, our May 9th meeting, or I think that was the date, although I'm not exactly sure. But it was a continuation. We wanted a report from our Animal Control Officer, Kirsten Herschler. So Kirsten, can you give us an update as to where things stand?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So myself and Officer Hurd went to Eight Beacon, and the fencing is far better than what we expected. He did everything that we asked and reinforced certain areas that we hadn't asked for. So we're both very confident that there's not going to be any issue with any of the dogs at that residence.
Okay, any comments or questions from the board? So I think with that, I'm sorry, did I? So I think with that, we can close the public hearing at this point. And I think we already, I think we already voted what we, what we were going to do. So I think we just have to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second, second.
Okay, and do we roll call votes? Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much, Kirsten. Thank you to-
Andrea, you need to vote as well.
What do I need to do? I'm sorry.
You just need to vote. Sorry, I'm doing my cork work.
Oh. Okay, so, so I guess-
You need to vote. You gotta say yes or aye.
You just have to say aye.
Oh, I didn't vote. I'm sorry, aye. Oops. Oh dear. Sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
My pleasure.
Okay, and thank you to Kirsten for follow-up and also for the Massa's willingness to even go above and beyond what was requested. So with that, moving to our consent agenda, we have requests to approve the following. A sandwich board easel with respect to the 2020 Annual Town Election. Seven signs to be placed in the following locations: the Town Common, Minut's Corner, Cameron Senior Center, Parkerville Schoolhouse, Old Knapp School, Graniteville Ballfield Entrance, and on the median at the intersection of Littleton Road and Concord Road. The applicant is Donna Furman on behalf of the League of Women Voters. And that's from Wednesday, June 10th, 2020, through Monday, June 29th, 2020. We have a request for a street and road closure for Sunday, June 14th, 2020, from 4:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. The request is, the applicant is Catherine Dusset. It is, the event is a peace rally, and roads seeking to be closed are Depot Street at Cummings Road, Main Street at Depot Street, Lincoln Street at Boston Road, and Main Street at Boston Road. And then we have a request from Ellen Rainville on behalf of the J.V. Fletcher Library for a, for use of the Town Common and a bandstand for a find-and-seek hunt on Saturday, July 25th, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, can I ask a question just related to the street closure? I didn't, I don't recall seeing anything from Public Safety about any concerns that they had. If there was one, I missed it. I'm sorry.
Jody?
There were public safety comments in your packet, at least they were supposed to be there. So if you want to vote contingent upon public safety, we'll make sure that those are part of it.
Yep, please.
Okay, yeah, why don't we make that part of the motion?
Just one question, Andrea. So the street closure is from 4:00 to 5:00. Last, the last sitting we had, about what, 400 to 500 people, I think, was the estimate. And I think they wanted to have a parade as part of this event. I mean, I guess my question is, is an hour enough to move 500 people down Main Street to Fishers Way, I think was the plan, to just be, you know, it's like 5:30 to make sure that we have a window?
I think that makes sense, just to make sure that the roads are clear for, of folks, yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so with the renewed motion being a motion to approve the consent agenda contingent upon public safety comments and extending the road closure time till 5:30 p.m. Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
Aye. Okay.
Good job, Andrea.
I got it right this time. Okay, so we are now at our 7:20 p.m. item. And before we start a discussion, I just, I want to at least provide some, some background and just some context for why I put this on the agenda and what I expect from tonight's, or what I hope will come out of tonight's discussion with both the board and members of the community who may be listening in. So the death of George Floyd and the subsequent events over the past two weeks presents one of those moments in time. Cities and communities across the nation are looking at themselves, and it is fitting that Westford also paused and take a look at itself. The purpose of this agenda item is to start a discussion and a conversation. I'm sure, if allowed, it could go on for hours, but that is not the purpose for tonight. The purpose tonight is to begin a conversation that may lead to suggestions for future actions, to discuss what are we currently doing to address issues such as racism, gender inequality, inclusion, and diversity? What can we do better? What are we not doing? And to involve the community in these conversations. Westford bills itself as a welcoming community, but there are residents in Westford who, at times, have not felt welcomed. Why is that so, and how do we address that? How do we create an environment and atmosphere that is safe, where residents who perceive that they have been treated unfairly or discriminated against can report those actions, feel that they will be heard, and that their perceptions and experiences will be addressed? Finally, the board and our police department want the community to know that the methods that were used by the Minneapolis Police are not part of any training, policy, or program used by the Westford Police. There are policies in place dealing with the use of force, de-escalation, compilation of statistics of arrests, implicit bias, and those policies will be made available to the public. As I said, this is the start of a conversation that should involve all aspects of our community, including not just elected boards, but our police, our schools, our houses of worship, and most importantly, you, the residents of our town. So with that background, I open it up for discussion first among the board, and then, as I said, from anybody who may be out there looking, asking questions. So Tom, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Andrea, for, for setting the table. I was able to join the really remarkable event on the common last Wednesday, and I just want to give people a chance to hear some of the stories that were shared there, because I found them really moving and remarkable. We had a number of powerful young black men and women speak about their experience of racism in Westford. They shared some personal stories about being called the N-word on the school bus, being made fun of because of the way their hair looked, being told by adults on their own street that they didn't belong there, and they're just within a few blocks of their own home. One thing I do want to mention is that the Westford Police, in many of these stories, was really an ally, really helpful in, in, in supporting families and solving problems. One young woman shared a story where an older white female neighbor asked her why she always had to walk down her street when she lived just a couple of blocks away. She went home, told her parents what had happened. Her parents jumped in the car with her and went to Westford Police Station, and the officers there were very reassuring, helped them, formed a bond with them, went and visited them in their neighborhood. And in fact, one of the speakers only was at the event because the Westford Police officer, who'd been this longtime friend, texted her and told her what was going on. I think overall, a lot of the Westford Police were highlighted as helpers and allies in these stories. And also, I just want to mention, along the lines of what you mentioned, Andrea, the conversation's not new. Many of us have met with police leadership a number of times, have reviewed this data with them, have talked about their policies. I think, I think the police leadership would welcome a broader discussion on this topic, but I think we're, we're in motion on this. And I think we're, I think in Westford, we're in a mode of taking a pretty good system and trying to make it better. So I guess I have three, three ideas maybe to put forward. One is that maybe with some community support, we invite the Westford Police to present publicly a lot of their policies around de-escalation, around, around how they, they track and look for potential for racial bias and what they do if they see those trends. I know that the police will be an ally in that. I think there's also a broader community conversation to be had, because many of the specific incidents of racism that were mentioned happened in the schools or in the neighborhoods. They weren't related directly to the police. The police came and, and helped in many of those cases. But I think a broader community conversation is needed here. And also, I think it might be worth, as you just started to do, Andrea, for us to make a joint statement together as town, schools, police, and fire, just to share sort of our, our, our community horror at some of the events that have happened and our commitment to making it right, and our commitment to making things better here in Westford. And that could take the form of some of the statements that a number of towns around us, like Bedford and Andover, have made. So those, those are three ideas, just a, a chance for our police to share the good work they're doing and maybe invite an opportunity to make it better. The statement that I mentioned, and then also sort of joining in a broader community conversation.
Okay, Elizabeth?
So, Tom, I had the same list of three things to discuss tonight. I fully agree that our board should join other communities and join other leaders from our town here. I know the Westford Police has already put out a statement about what happened in Minneapolis. I would like to join them and any other boards that would like to join us in making a public statement together. I would like to do that. I appreciate that our Deputy Chief Chambers has been actively engaged in numerous conversations over the past week or two and is very willing to be a part of this conversation with the public to talk about how our department has been trained and how they handle difficult situations so that we don't end up with the, the situation that happened in Minneapolis. And then the third point being the community engagement. I did, I believe Marie Claire O'Neill is on the call tonight. I believe she might like to speak once board members have spoken. She had some good ideas around bringing the community together to continue this conversation. Clearly, Westford needs to do more work, and I think this is a time that we need to reflect and find ways that we can do even better as a community.
Scott?
So I would echo the, the comments, you know, so far. And I, you know, so I had a couple of thoughts in addition to those. One was not just, you know, from the rally, but we've had graffiti in town that was completely inappropriate, racially tinged, probably from school kids, so I agree, we need to get the schools involved. And I think some of it may be genuine hatred, and some of it is simply people not knowing how hurtful some things are. That's why I think the next step of the, of the community forum is welcome and perhaps overdue. When I think back to work that Andrea did years ago in the Federal Housing Committee, trying to get a group home in Westford. The first attempt, we were met with what I recall sort of a soft prejudice. Why do I have to have those people in my neighborhood? And they didn't really mean that, as it sounds, they meant it as, they just didn't understand what mentally, you know, challenged individuals had for needs. And we had a forum in the old police training room. We had Dr. Dwyer, our sped director, we had the state Director of Retardation, as it was uncalled, in our district, talk about what a group home did, what the needs were, how they were run. And we now have a couple of group homes in Westford, because the education, you know, to the community was very, very helpful in making people understand the need and, and actually creating desire. So I, you know, I do think we want to have some kind of a forum, perhaps, you know, headed by a clergy member or a therapist, not a town official. Because I kind of want to hear what the concerns the community got. I think we talk about what we do as a town has to be, those actions need to be based upon some kind of stated needs and fears and, and then the plan worked, you know, for the community to, to deal with that. So I think we have to have that kind of dialogue, where we talk ideally to each other, not past each other, as the nation seems to be doing. Westford, I, when I actually spoke at town meeting for this Displays Commission, I remember saying, "Westford is a welcoming town, but we can do better." I think that applies here, that as we've all said, we've got a good police department. We've got a lot of good people. We also have got, you know, unfortunate incidents, which have been documented, and we need to improve on that. So we do that as a charity and move forward.
Andrea, this is Bill Olson. May, may I make a comment, please?
Absolutely.
Well, we, for the last three years, have had an excellent diversity and inclusion team. It includes and has been facilitated by our Grade 6 through 12 Science Quarter, Jenny Kravitz, school community member Alicia Mallon has also been a member of the team. We lost Jenny as a facilitator this past year, and I, I did not call any meetings, but am committed to rekindling the, what I think is a high-quality diversity and inclusion team. We were commanded by the Massachusetts Department of Education, as being one of the few school systems that has a, such a team. We have done extensive training with our staff, with our students. We have used our students and embraced them to be peer trainers. So we had some of our high school students who reported to the school committee a number of months ago, that they had worked with the Grade 3 through 5 students in talking about bias and inclusion and racism. So that our plan for this year is to have a, a different facilitator for each month of the school year, whether we are in person or remote. They do not have to be, does not have to be a person within the school system. It can be a member of the clergy or someone in the community who is passionate about making sure that we deal successfully and responsibly with the issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So with that being said, if anyone is interested in facilitating one of our monthly meetings that will begin in September, please contact me, send me an email, and I will, I'll be glad to be in touch with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Jody?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that our police chief is actually on vacation, which is why the deputy police chief is kind of assisting, and he is participating in the meeting tonight. But he did put up today their mission statement and their use of force and removal from duty policy and the use of force reporting policy, and also the racial and gender profiling policy. So those are all available online for people to view. And I think, you know, we, we do have a remarkable police department, and they are very open to working with the public and the, the boards to improve, as we all continually want to improve. So I just wanted to mention that.
Jody, are those policies on, on the police's website or on the town website? Where can people find them?
So you go to westfordma.gov and scroll down Departments to Police, and you click on that, and they're front and center. And the other thing I wanted to mention is I was asked by a, a resident to join a forum on July 7th, which will be, I believe, some of you will be participating too. They did ask Mark Chambers, as the chief's on vacation. So we will have a public forum that night to talk about these things, so. Okay, there we go. Look, somebody pulled it up there. The man behind the curtain. And if you, they did a statement, and if you scroll down, you can see the mission statement, use of force, as I said. So those policies are available online.
And Andrea, Mark has raised his hand, if you'd like to invite him to speak.
Yes, please, Mark. Deputy Chief Chambers. I think you have to unmute yourself, Mark. Oh, no, I have to unmute him. Wait a minute.
I'm trying. Maybe Mike Wells can help me figure out how to operate this system.
Okay, oops. Unmute, Mark.
There's too many of us doing it.
There we go.
Okay.
Okay.
You got me?
Working yours?
Yeah, of course.
Sounds like Mark's got some company there. I should say Deputy Chief.
Sorry, big truck rolled down the road, and my, my, my big dog doesn't really like that much noise. My kids are corralling him right now. Sorry about that. First off, I'd just like to say thank you to the board and for Jody for all your support. It's, this has been a, I know it's been a stressful time for everyone to see those types of images and to see somebody that is supposed to be a trusted servant within the community behave in that, that manner. It's unthinkable. And to have that happen and to have police kind of devilified by it, we understand it. And, you know, and it's, it's difficult to, to see, and it's been difficult to deal with. And, but I do just want to say thank you very much to the board and to Jody for your support going through this. We take our responsibility to the community of Westford very seriously. We've had a lot of difficult discussions within the police department, especially over the past few years, when we had our first kind of political rally around Black Lives Matter. When we had our first kind of political rally around Black Lives Matter, we really looked at our policies and procedures at that time and tried to make any necessary changes that we thought would, would benefit the community. So on top of that, we also have our our accreditation standards that we meet. So we follow the best practices and with everything that's going on right now, we are looking at our policies. I spoke with Chief McInnany today and we've been in discussion about our policies and potential changes. I know the board has forwarded some information as well as Jody has forwarded information to us that we're, we're all open to discussion and things that make sense for the police department, for the town of Westford, we are certainly willing to address. And the first step in that was, was today, putting that statement on our website. We want to remain transparent and we want to be accountable to the, to the town. And we want to continue to follow the best practices as set for the police departments. But I think it's very important and I'm glad that the board pointed it out that this isn't just the police. This is a community wide effort that's going to need to be undertaken for us to be successful and for us to improve our awesome community. I mean, I grew up here, my, my wife grew up here and I'm so happy to be able to have my children grow up here. Because I don't think we're afraid to have these types of conversations. And I think that we, we want to make sure that we are leading the discussion. You know, we'll work with Indivisible Westford and the Board of Selectmen and First Parish Church. I know July 7th, I believe, is going to be that public forum where we can continue to have these discussions. So again, I just wanted to say thank you to the board and for Jody for your continued support. The community outreach has actually been, has been very, very nice to hear. We heard a lot of nice messages last week. We can all get behind the fact that police brutality is an issue in some, some areas and we're more than happy to look at our, our policies and procedures. I would just finally just like to mention that in the past 20 years that I've been a use of force instructor here in Westford, I've trained people from, with people and people from around the world and trained at police academies. We've had no use of force complaints. We've had no excessive use of force complaints in Westford. And I think that that's very important to know. It's, it's very telling. We have some of the best take myself out of the equation, we have some of the best instructors in the Commonwealth and who have been trained by some of the best instructors in the world. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your support and we're committed to continuing to move forward with the community and address any issues that we can.
Thanks, Mark. Mark, before you go, there's a question that we received. And the question is, has the Westford Police Department ever engaged in training from David Grossman or in the methods of, and this is in quotes, kilology?
No, we have not, although probably 15 years ago or so. It's Lieutenant David Grossman. He, it's, it's essentially the warrior mindset. Where if you're in a fight, you do what you need to do to win. We have had people ask to attend that. We have not had anybody attend that, that type of training in the past 10 years. I would have to look at training records, but that's, that's something that most, that some of our guys will go to on their own to just enhance their, their self-defense skills and to improve upon their mindset when they're putting under a stressful situation like that. So they can make good decisions. It's not a killing mindset. It is a survival mindset. Do what you need to do to keep yourself, to, to be able to survive the encounter. I think if you read our policies and what we've been able to do through our training and we are working on kind of a better documentation of in capturing the, the, the processes that we use to train and, and the philosophies that we adhere to. But you'll see that through some of our documentation that we provided on the website. De-escalation is written in there. I understand that that's probably something that we're going to have to address a little bit more thoroughly going forward. But those are all conversations that we're willing to have. But as far as Grossman's concerned, I don't have the information exactly in front of me, but I know that we haven't approved any training like that in a while. And it's not a killing mindset. I disagree with that assessment.
Thank you. And
Andrea, do you see the question? Do you see the question posted on the chat? About if the police department has race and ethnicity data for arrests?
Thank you. No, I
I didn't see that, but I can answer that. Yes, we do. We are required to maintain that through our accreditation standards. We also track that information on all of our use of force incidents that we have throughout the year.
And is that data that can be shared? The question was asking if it could be posted as well?
I would have to check with our accreditation manager and I would imagine we share with the FBI and the Use of Force National Database, which I would like to say we, we report all of our, well, we would report any of our significant use of forces to the to the national database. We just, we haven't had any.
Tom?
Thank you.
Just, just I know I, like everyone else, wants to hear from the community, but if one of the threads here is that we, we want to pull together all the policies in a sort of cohesive report, take a look at how close we are to best practice with all of these things and see if there's room to improve. I guess I would suggest an action item that along with all the input we're about to get, I think that we decide between now and our next meeting, sort of what form that might take, whether it's a community action committee, whether it's first just a report from the from the deputy chief and the chief. But I do think it's great to have all the stuff posted, but I think having it all brought together in a comprehensive way and sort of represented to the public in a cohesive document would be pretty helpful.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, so I've agreed, I agree with, with everything that the rest of my peers on the board have said. I do have one question. And that relates to the town and school safety task force. And, you know, a lot of the requests for the task force and how they're affected by where we're headed with any changes related to policing policy and input from the community. So, you know, Tom, I know you and Scott represent us on that. But I really think that with all of the time and energy and money that's been spent on, on that excellent work, I think we need to understand how the recommendations that have come out of that get affected by wherever we're headed with any of the changes that, that the community wants to bring forward.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mark. And with, with your permission, Andrea, it's a great point. Great point, Mark. And we are going to pull together a meeting soon. We're going to talk about what's happened during COVID and what's happened during George Floyd era and how that affects the work. And we'll probably come back to you, to this board and see if there's room to expand the scope of what the town and school safety task force is doing. Whether that belongs in a separate group or whether we should do it together, but yeah, absolutely on our minds and and I think community wellness, this, this is a big part of community wellness, equity and fairness. So I think we're, we're still figuring out how to, how to absorb that into the safety task force work.
Yep. I could just add to that.
Yep.
I mean, we sort of had just started two phases, right? There's the, there's the security phase and there's the mental wellness phase. And then there's a capital impact and then there's a personnel impact. So the only thing that we've done as a task force in terms of recommendations to the board and town meeting has been capital for things that would improve your security, but in various forms. So that's electronic, you know, better communications and systems. We've not made any decisions on personnel. I think that's where we, you know, we, we're talking about perhaps adding more mental wellness counselors. If we have an issue with diversity and racism in the schools, perhaps we needed to, clearly bigotry is going to affect mental health. So maybe a way to dovetail the current discussion with those wellness needs to make it work together.
Yeah. Mark?
Yeah. So and just adding, I know one of the discussion items, for example, was about more school resource officers as a possibility. Again, just in light of where everybody's feeling at this point in time, I think the committee, the task force needs to take a real hard look about whether that is still something that is, is desirous. And I would really like to, there's, there's forms of this that are, that are bullying. You know, whether it be racism, whether it be bigotry, they are all forms of, of bullying. And I think that really has to be a part of this as well, as we talk about the social and emotional elements.
So
We're getting wrapped around the free and axle here.
Andrea? I had, so I think we always knew as a task force that the resource officers would be probably the place for greatest dialogue in, in terms of possibly increasing staffing. The key is possibly, it was never made into our recommendations to the, to the community yet. But I think many of the reasons that it may be a good idea, I would have mentioned, you know, bullying, we've, we did hear from the community that in most cases, our police are allies of, of, of our targeted individuals, if we're to put it that way, they've been helpful. And so I think rather than police being perceived as us versus them in Westford, they are perceived as allies. And, you know, if we actually hear from the community in a broader context, that's true. That may argue in favor as opposed to against, you know, adding, adding a couple more to that, to that presence.
I just
Did it have a question?
Yeah, I see. I mean, I, I was just about to go there, Mike. We do have a question and I guess I want to clarify it. And the question is the town, is the town and school task force still meeting and are the meetings public? So I think you've just heard they, they, during this time, they have, we haven't been, they haven't been meeting. They are planning to meet sometime in the future. Is that right, Tom?
Yeah, we're targeting a, a meeting the week of, immediately after town meeting. And into the, to the part of it is at public, they are posted.
Yeah. And they're public.
Yep.
So I think that is. So we answered that question. So we do have some questions on to be answered. So I'm going to turn to those questions. Um, this is actually directed towards the schools. What is the Westford Public School doing to ensure diversity among teachers? Additionally, how does the Westford Public Schools intend to improve the study of African-American history in schools? I don't know. Bill, Avery, I'm not sure which one of you wants to take that or somebody else.
May I just say, we make every effort to hire, not only recruit, but retain educators of color, of different origins. We we have just, just hired a person this week who we're very proud to have on, on board who represents increased diversity to our faculty at the, at the high school. I spoke late last week with our human resource coordinator to make sure that when we advertise positions, that we advertise in those areas. Whether it be online and those sites that tend to be visited more by diverse candidates. Because we do want to increase with the multicultural nature of our town. Now we do want to increase the diversity of our, of our staff. I, I did want to make a comment about interacting with Guidepost. I have communicated with, with Angela over the last, from Guidepost over the last week and a half. And have arranged for a meeting between she and some of her staff and Denise Pigeon from the Sherbetak and I. In fact, the meeting is this week, June 12th. We're going to talk about the implications of COVID-19 and school safety in general. But we're also now going to weave in also with Health Management Associates, how we work with our students and our staff to, to fulfill our responsibility to bring about a greater understanding of diversity, equity and inclusion. So we're going to use both of those companies that have been active with us. We do know that we will have a committee, we have a committee in place right now, subcommittees focusing on the reopening of schools in the fall. We have four subcommittees, teaching and learning, basically school operations, hygiene protocols and social emotional adjustments, because it is going to be quite a different transition for both staff and students to return to school, those who will in fact, be returning to school. We're not sure how many will want to come back. We are going to be doing a survey within the next couple of weeks of parents, asking them about the return, return of their child to school in the fall. So a lot of things on the table, we're trying to take an approach of bringing as much expertise and perspectives as possible to make sure we make the right decisions.
Mark?
Yeah, sorry. If I can just add one other thing too. I think as leaders of the, of our community is, and I include not only everybody on this call, but also parents and other staff, one of the ways that we can start to improve on some of this is the way that we interact with each other. And I just take for example, everything that transpired this past fall and into the winter as we were having what were intended to be adult conversations about various budgets. And I think we can set better examples for our community by the way we handle some of those situations.
Um.
Andrea, I'm not, this is Megan. I'm not sure how to raise my hand. Could I just jump in and say something quickly with regards to the schools?
Yes, please do. By the way, Megan, there's a little button at the top that has a hand on it, but go ahead. Okay.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I couldn't figure out where to find it. I just want to point out as a member of the policy subcommittee along with Alicia Mallon and Gloria Miller, that one of our lenses that we've been looking through this entire year and last year in every policy that we've looked at is, is through a lens of diversity, inclusion and equity. And some of those policies that have come up have been about students and some of them have been about hiring practices. And I think that that is something moving forward as well, that the schools really need to pay attention to and have a lens of in looking at everything that we evaluate and update. Whether it's with regards to our students or our staff, but I just wanted to point it out that that is another facet that is being looked at. And so I encourage people when we, when policy updates do come up to always take a look and comment and help us with making those policies with regards to our schools more inclusive and more aware of differences amongst our community and embracing those. So I just wanted to point that out as well.
I, I think it is, I think it is really important moving forward. I, I hear and I commend the schools for having, you know, these policies in place and looking at it and now the board, you know, looking at, you know, our policies, the police looking at their policies. This is a community wide discussion. So I think it's also very important that we communicate among ourselves and between and among the boards. And let one another know, you know, what's in place, what we're doing, how we can coordinate and how we can collaborate with one another. I, I think that is very important moving forward, that we are moving together, forward together in a collaborative process. These are, these are not separate silos and, and I really want to emphasize that and make sure that we are not operating in separate silos.
Absolutely. Yeah, I totally agree. Thank you for pointing that out. And additionally, you know, I think the school committee members all feel it's, it's a systemic change, just as it's a systemic problem, it's a systemic change and it takes all facets of our town and policies and boards and committees and looking at all of that to recognize the deficiencies and where we need to do better. Yes.
Andrea, you, you have one more question, Andrea, that's been posted.
Uh, oh, the, yes. Um, will the Westford Public School administrators and selectmen commit to having extensive racial diversity training if there has not been training already?
Well, may I just, may I answer that? And that we will continue to have training. We have used the Anti-Defamation League extensively and their World of Difference Training Program. About 10, 11 months ago, maybe a little bit more, our entire leadership team spent a full day with the ADL on the World of Difference, talking about bias, implicit bias, discrimination and equity issues. It was a day extraordinarily well spent and we will continue to do that.
Elizabeth? No, oh, did you want to say something, Elizabeth, or did you just?
No, I will respond to that question. I mean, I won't be on the board much longer, but I think if there's some training that is inclusive of elected town leaders and open to the community as well. You know, individuals, I think that could be an excellent. Day of conversation. And if it's something the schools, you know, have done some version of that. And we could make that available to all our elected leaders and community leaders. I think that could be a powerful experience for our community. I did want to say, it looks like Gloria. May want to speak in the chat box. She.
You know, I just have 20 boxes open here.
Thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Gloria, just before you you go, I just wanted to follow up on what Elizabeth said before we lose that train of thought and finish answering the prior question. So let me just finish that and then I'll get to you, okay? So I think I agree with what Elizabeth said. If there is, you know, training out there, if there's a forum out there that, you know, not only us, but again. Attend and make make sense and makes available. I'm certainly willing to to engage in that and I'm always open to, you know, learning. And and, you know, examining myself. As well, going forward, so. Anyway, so with that, Gloria.
Oh, thanks, Elizabeth and Andrea. I I wanted to, I wanted to chime in to really acknowledge some of the leadership we've seen from our own students on this topic. There was a student led Diversity Day in the spring of 2018. There have been other efforts since then. There was also a new club at Westford Academy called the Noah Club, No One Walks Alone. Which works to fight against stigma attached to mental illness or mental health challenges. So there has been a lot of really good diversity work done by our very own students. And and just most recently, my inbox is overflowing right now. Students and young alumni have really been reaching out to school committee and other administrators. Over the last couple of days and it's it's a flood of emails. And I think we really need to acknowledge that, we need to acknowledge their energy. And I think we need to find ways to amplify their voices and listen to them and hear what their experiences have been. And I think our young alum could be a really powerful force for that. Because they have graduated from Westford Academy and then gone on to colleges. And I think it's really important for us to hear from them. A, as they reflect back on their experience in Westford, how do they recall that? And B, did we really do enough to prepare them to go off to college? And perhaps engage in a community that is more diverse than our own in many dimensions, whether it be race, religion, socioeconomic background. I think those are all important things to add to our list to it to examine and reflect on.
I definitely, hang on one minute, Bill. I definitely agree with you, Gloria. Our students should certainly be part of this conversation. I am sure that they've got, you know, ideas, comments, experiences. And perceptions that that we should all be listening to and hearing. So they they need to be brought into this discussion as well. Bill?
I was just going to say, the following up on what Gloria mentioned, the students have extraordinary power. In that the younger students are riveted to what they have to say. I've been to several several trainings, whether it's technology, whether it's diversity and inclusion. If an adult speaks with our students, yes, there is a certain level of attentiveness and interest. If older brothers and sisters, peers, cousins, neighbors, our older students speak with our younger students. Really, they are fully attentive and riveted to what they have to say. So in fact, we just had Ragav and, oh, my gosh, I apologize, I forgot the student's name. Who worked with some of our three through five, grade three through five students in the last year and a half. And did so very successfully. In fact, I want to congratulate them for being featured as graduates on one of the TV news stations tonight from Boston. But I also wanted to say, we are, we would be absolutely thrilled to be able to participate with all of the town personnel, any town personnel along with us. In the World of Difference Training Program offered by the ADL. It's an exceptional program. We learned an awful lot and it'd be wonderful expanding the group to join us.
I think maybe. Jody, I assume you're still out there, even though we can't see you. But I certainly think that that's a suggestion that, you know, we we should explore on behalf of the town and for the town. Going forward and making that available to to all town employees.
Absolutely.
Elizabeth, and I think Tommy would end up too.
Just a thought. We aren't having a strategic planning retreat this year. Obviously, with everything that's going on in town meeting, I'm just wondering if we can put that, you know, community event that usually brings us together in a less formal situation. You know, if we think about what we can do in that context, maybe it has to be done virtually. But a way that we have residents, staff. Elected folks, all as peers in a circle, having a conversation. And perhaps we apply this topic. In that format and see what we could put together. To hopefully bring together a large group of, large part of the community.
Tom, and I see I've got more questions, so go ahead.
Well, one of my comments is related to Mary Claire O'Neill's question, which is, you know, can there be a committee of townspeople that that get together on this issue? So there, there's one thing that's already in motion, which is people from the town, people from Indivisible, people from houses of worship in town. That are trying to pull together this community discussion that others have mentioned before, that would be early July. We can certainly get more information out there about that. The reason I think that's a whole community conversation instead of something just sponsored by the town. Is that really it's all of us together that need to address this topic together. So that there is an event like that in the works. And then specifically, I'm not sure where we are in terms of agenda, Andrea, but. The two, two other things that we talked about earlier, one was, do we want to draft a joint statement? So I can make a motion to that when the time's right, if that's ready. And also, I think in between now and the next meeting, pulling together sort of a detailed report on the current practices. That we have in the excellent Westford Police Department in terms of racial bias training, how we look at the data, use of force, all the things we've talked about before. I think it'd be good if we, at least by next meeting, had a clear picture of sort of how we're going to pull that together and share that with the community and get further input.
I think that makes sense and give us a few more minutes and then you can make the the appropriate motion. Because. There are, let me just see. There are a couple of more, I think, questions and comments. We have a comment asking that we make every effort to include opinions and active participation of the people of color in our community. I think everybody on this board and what we've been saying tonight would agree with that, that. It is important that we have people of color engaged in the conversation and in the discussion itself. And make sure that the environment that we are creating makes it such an environment, they are, you know, willing and feel comfortable and safe to come forward. With their comments in in a very, you know, what I hope would be an honest and forthright discussion. That although maybe uncomfortable, we're all willing to sit with and listen to. So. There's that comment. And then the last one has to do with. Compensating staff who spend many hours with the Anti-Defamation League. I guess I've not really, I don't know really what the questionnaire is questionnaire is getting at. But also, right now, I think it's simply a suggestion and we don't really know what would be involved with attending a training session with the ADL. Whether it's all day, whether it's a forum, you know, for a couple of hours online or whatever. So I think that we just need to continue to explore that. And there's one other question, and Mike Wells, I think this one goes to you. Someone has asked, why does the link to the police chief's email direct you to the water department complaints page?
That's a very good question, and I will find out from the PD where that link should go and I will deal with it tomorrow.
Thank you.
I think Beth Morrison had her hand up. Beth, I'm not sure if you've taken your hand back down. I'm unmuting you, I think, Beth, if you have a question.
Um, I just wanted to thank you for bringing this topic up tonight and having it on the agenda. And I'm wondering if you're going to have the resolution at the next meeting or if you're considering considering a resolution now. We did send a, I know it was kind of late in the game. Indivisible Westford did send a resolution that we would like you to consider. And also, there's. Some state legislation that I think will be coming out in the next week from the Black and Latino Caucus at the state level. And I'm wondering if you would be willing to support that legislation whenever, after you review it, of course. But if you would consider lending your support to that.
So Beth, we did get your Indivisible Westford's resolution. We got it literally an hour before our meeting. I will speak for myself in saying that I I really have not had any time to consider it, look at it, you know, and study it. And I, I'm going to assume that the board also has not had ample time to look at it. So it's something that the board needs time to consider and deliberate about. So the answer to your first question is no, we're not taking any action on it tonight. But we can certainly. Put it on our next agenda and consider it at that point in time. Mark?
Yeah, so just to that point, we heard tonight about this resolution. We've heard tonight about signing on with other communities about certain statements. We've heard about, at some point in time, if we don't have something that is consolidated and concise and relevant. And we have several different statements going out, we lose whatever intent was there. So I don't want to rush into this. I think we are all committed and I hopefully the community is committed to doing what is absolutely right and moving to the point. But I don't want to support one resolution versus another or one town statement versus another without understanding the totality of what it is that we're doing. Otherwise, you know, like so many things that happen in this world are just words. And then, you know, three months from now, they're gone. So, you know, I do, Beth, thank you for forwarding that, but I also have not had a chance to review it. And I do want to understand what else is being contemplated that we are looking to sign our name. On as as a board and make sure we're making the smartest, most concise and yet effective one statement on behalf of the entire community.
And and the other part of your question, Beth, which was the legislation that the Black and Latino Caucus is supporting. I don't know that, you know, I don't believe that legislation is out yet, or if it is, it just came out and I certainly haven't seen it. So again, that would be something for future discussion. As to what what the board, you know, whether the board wants to support it, whether there are other actions or measures that the board want want to take. So all of that, you know, is to say, it's all on the table. And as I said at the very beginning of this. Discussion and then. I think I hope we're ready to at least for tonight, emphasis on for tonight, move along. This is the beginning of a conversation in our town. I think it's been a really good beginning. I think we've heard a lot of good ideas and a lot of good input and suggestions. And I think, you know, we need to move, you know, figure out how we're going to move forward here. What what statement, if we are going to issue a statement, what that statement is going to say, arranging community forums and continuing this. This discussion and this conversation as we move forward. And. Tom, I was going to get back to you because you were considering whether or not to make a motion.
You've got two, two last questions maybe for tonight from Robin Miller, part of the Miller clan.
That, I'm sorry, right, could a report on policing practices in Westford not just be released once but turned into an annual report? I think that's something we can talk about with the police department. And. Oh, there's one, oops, sorry. I think the last one is just, I just see a comment, Tom, am I missing a question?
One is a commitment to, will the statement say, make the statement that Black Lives Matter? I think, I think Mark made a good point, we need to draft our statement together first and. And and so I would, if it makes sense to you, Andrea, say that that'll be one of the things we'll think about. And then Nina Katz had a question, for to address issues of race, diversity, inclusion, we need to develop a plan to reverse the legacy of redlining in our town. I think that that becomes part of our community conversation. And and so thank you, Nina, for for bringing that to our attention. So the motion, I'm not sure, you can advise me, Andrea, I'm not sure if it's a motion or request. One is in the, maybe an agenda item for our next meeting, to to talk about what form, sort of a report on current police practices in Westford are, on all the topics we've been talking about. And then a suggestion maybe for the board about whether that turns into a community action committee or some other community involved review of best practice to to take the good work we're doing and see if that can advance further. So I don't, I don't know if that's a motion exactly, but I would, I would love to see that on our agenda next time. And I'd be happy, maybe Scott, if I can volunteer you to, since we're already doing some of this. We could work with the police between now and then to try to pull some of that together. And then the second, again, is is maybe a motion. I think it is important that we do make a statement. I don't think we know what the statement is, to Mark's point, that we're ready to make. But, you know, I would like to commit to making a statement and for us over the next couple of days to circulate some ideas. I'm not sure that needs to be a motion, but again, I'd be happy to. To to put together some drafts that I could share with the group.
Okay, so I don't think your first part has to be a motion. I will agree to put it, to put it on our agenda in for our next meeting. In terms of. A statement. I guess. My only concern, not that we, I believe we should issue a statement. I am concerned, and Jody, please help me out here. Can we draft a statement that obviously everybody on the board is going to have to look at and and sign on and be comfortable with? And Tom, are you thinking that this is a statement from the board, the school committee, from other elected boards, or what are you thinking?
The model I'm starting for is is the the Andover model, which I just had a chance to look at today, which is. Select Board, Town Management, Leadership, Police, Fire, Schools. And I hope I haven't left anybody out, but it's 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 the town institutions together. And the statement is is really just saying that it's an important issue. We take it very seriously, we understand it's important to residents. And it gives a couple of sentences of of sort of direction on where those different entities are in terms of. You know, policies they're looking at, information they expect to share. So it's it's a one page kind of high level statement of commitment with a rough roadmap of of what's coming.
So here's, here's my only concern and my question, Jody. If we do that, are we violating open meeting law and deliberations?
So if Tom and Scott are the kind of drivers here and they send us out to all the people that you just mentioned, Tom. Individually, the select board members can. Write one of them, I would, I would say, because three of you are a quorum. So I guess it shouldn't be both of you, it should be one or the other, Tom or Scott. Send us out individually, the board member can write back to Tom or Scott, but you don't want to include a quorum. So if it's Tom, he could collect all of your thoughts, try to put them together into one document, but you really can't deliberate. You know, offline, so I don't know if that makes it clear, but.
I think it does. So I think, I think, Tom, if you want to. I think it does. So I think, I think, Tom, if you want to take the lead, since you volunteered, to try and draft something and then circulate it, and then each of us can respond individually. And then also circulating it, I think, to the police chief, the fire chief, the superintendent of schools, then we can start from there.
Andrea, I think Scott may have had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott. Yes?
Not a question. I think Tom's first comment was that he and I would partner on talking to the police department about what they would be putting up and what, for detail, perhaps with the begin, and report kind of thing. I think the idea of the statement was intended to be for Tom only. So I think we're at the right place right now.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, I think that works. Mark? Yep, I got you.
If I can just ask, you know, statements are really important. Words are really important. To me, actions are far more important than statements and words. So I haven't looked at the Andover model that you're referencing to know whether it has action, actual action items in it, or actionable words. But I would ask that as you're thinking about that, that that be taken into serious consideration. Empty words, empty promises, they make people feel good for a little period of time, but it's what we do, our actions, that are far more important. And if we can make sure that whatever we say kind of has some teeth into where we're headed with why we're saying that, then I think that makes it more important and more relevant.
And just one other comment here from viewers that I don't want to ignore. Just a statement that many of the speakers tonight, or all of us, are white. So we are committed to bring communities of color into this discussion. So it's fair game to point that out.
Thank you. I thought I had responded to that one previously, but thanks. And just, Mark, to your point, and I will, I've seen the Andover statement, and I'll forward it to everybody, to the board, other board members, so you can see it as well. It does include, as I recall, it does include one action item, which was arranging and establishing a community forum where people could participate, akin to what we've been talking to about tonight. So with that, I want to thank everybody for their participation, for their questions, for their comments. So I think at this point, I'm just checking one other thing. In terms of the school committee, yes, I'm sorry, I just said the superintendent. I just kind of assumed that the superintendent would include the school committee, but definitely you should be included and you should have the opportunity to review the statement as well. And I think I have hit all of the comments and questions. So with that, as I said, thank you, everybody, for your participation for this discussion tonight. I think it's been very valuable and very useful. I think it was a discussion that we needed to have, and it's one that we will continue to have as we move forward. So with that, we're going to turn to our 7:50 PM item, which is a joint meeting with the school committee and the finance committee to discuss updated projected revenues and the fiscal year 20 and 21 operating budgets. So I know, given the software that we use, only six of us are face, only six of us have our faces available on screen at any one time. But I think that it is important for the public to know, particularly with the school committee and the finance committee, who from those committees is attendance and who, although may not be appearing on screen, is in the background. So I'm going to ask, starting with the chair of the school committee, if you could please either identify or have your members identify who is online now and participating so that the public can know.
Hi, Andrea. Thanks. It's Avery. I believe our entire committee is here. I have Alicia, I have Gloria, Megan, Chris, Ming Chen, and I believe Sean. So we have our entire committee here online, though we may not appear on the screen.
Okay. And Hari, could you please let us know for the FinCom, who is out there in the background, please?
Well, for a FinCom, some people are attending via phone, so they will not be even on the staff list. So I would just call out the name and let them say they are in the meeting or not. That would make it very clear. Shankar? No. Levi? No. Dennis?
I'm here.
John?
I'm here.
Pat?
I'm here.
Wait, is that Beth or Patty?
Patty.
Patricia?
I'm here.
Yeah. Hari, myself, I'm here. Christina?
Yes, I'm here.
Beth?
I'm here.
Yep, so we have six of us here.
Okay. So also, what I'm going to ask the organizers in the background, if you could show, as we move forward, at least to start with, at least while I'm talking, can you show the chairs, myself, Hari, and Avery? On the screen?
Just a matter of record, Dennis Galvin is also online.
Okay. Thank you. What I want to preface this discussion with is for folks, and particularly out in the, who are listening in the community, this is intended to be a high-level, 20,000-foot sort of preview of our budget, where we stand today, and what we may be facing in fiscal year 21. I think it's important to bear in mind that there are a lot of unknowns right now, starting with, we don't know what state aid is going to be. We don't know what school is going to look like in the fall. We don't know what the requirements from the state are going to be and what that, what those requirements, what impact those requirements are going to have on our budget. But that being said, Jody and Dan and Ingrid and Bill have been at least starting to take a look at what the budget is going to look like, as well as if we are running deficits, where and how we're going to address those deficits. So they have been working very hard, and they have come up with several scenarios that I have asked them to present tonight so that we can start an initial discussion about this, and also so we can be completely open and transparent with the community in the reality that we may be facing some serious deficits in fiscal year 21 that we are going to have to deal with and figure out how we move forward as a community and what we're doing. So with that introduction, Jody?
Yes, thank you. So I think we wanted to start with an update on where we're at now with projected revenues. There's been some changes, so if we could just start there, get everybody on the same page, and then we'll go into some ideas we have if we need to react to state aid reduction. So Dan, if you want to summarize what, where we're at on the projected revenues, that would be great.
Sure. Can everybody see the screen okay? It shows up. Okay, so for our tax base, I did speak with Paul Puth last week, our principal assessor. Our new growth is tracking well. If we don't hit our target, we should be close to it, which is.
Hey, Dan, I'm not sure you're sharing the screen you want to share.
There's nothing, we aren't seeing anything on our screen.
Oh, that's why I asked. Okay.
We see your desktop, I'm sorry. I thought you meant, we see your desktop and not the data.
There we go.
It's a beautiful picture, though.
Thank you.
Okay, that's better. Thanks.
Regardless, new growth is tracking very well right now, which is great. Our tax base is our most important revenue stream. So if we hit that target, that's all positive. As Jody just said, we're going to tap on state aid in our next handout that we have. What you see here is the governor's original budget projection that we based our original budget off of. Going down local revenue, we've had a few changes here for the positives, which is great. Motor vehicle excise, we brought in about 3.55 million. We're about 200,000 away from our target for this year. So hopefully we bridge that gap in these last three weeks of the fiscal year. Other excises for the hotel, motel, and meals. We knew these would be a concern when this whole situation first arose. What we did in our projection was we estimated that we would bring in about 25% of the revenue that we realized last year during the fourth quarter, fourth quarter, which is March through May. We'll have those figures on June 30th, which I'll be happy to update the spreadsheet I have and share with everyone so we see the actual impact there. Pellet's interest on taxes, this was going to be a concern of mine after deferring interest. However, we had a tax deferral paid off in the amount of $150,000 last week. So that was an unexpected good surprise for us. So we will have no problem meeting our projected budget for FY '20 for that line item. Licenses and permits have been strong this year. We've exceeded our projection by 25,000 already. A lot of people are building as they're at home and pulling permits and whatnot. Next year, when the handovers close to completion, we should see a decrease in licenses and permits, but we already, so I didn't adjust the projection for next year, but, you know, the additional revenue this year will help our free cash balance. So overall, for local revenue, we're looking at about a $39,000 deficit for this fiscal year. And for next year, that translates to about a $441,000 deficit, just in local revenue. The other portion that we have to look at is our recreation enterprise fund. Again, most of the programs are shut down this year, starting in March. So we stopped bringing in revenue at that point. So we're looking at about $552,000 deficit in revenue for FY '20. However, we also stopped spending a lot of money there. So that's not the actual deficit we're looking at. We're looking at more of a $250,000 deficit. I know Jim Doin is presenting later on about updates regarding summer camps. So, you know, if things go well, this deficit could be reduced as well. I'm always optimistic. All right, below that, we did have a placeholder of $100,000 to the COVID-19 emergency account, which was authorized by Selectman Napol, I believe. We finally got direction from the state in our orders that we can treat this account like a federal grant where we spend it deficit. Then when the FEMA and CARES Act money comes in, it goes directly to offset those costs in this account. This account will not impact free cash or anything like that. It's going to be just like a revolving account out then in. So overall, our projected deficit from local revenue in the enterprise for FY '21 is about $691,000 compared to the budget that we put forward earlier this year.
Can you just scroll down, Dan, please?
Can you see the screen?
Because mine is bigger. Can everybody see the bottom there?
Yes.
Okay.
The last line I see is total general fund expenses.
Right, that's the next page. So can, probably scroll up here. This $691,000, that's the deficit that we're talking about for next year on page one. Okay. So the second page is basically our tracking mechanism for trying to project free cash closeouts for next year. For the, Ingrid, feel free to jump in here if you want. For the town side, we're looking at a closeout of about 1.1 million at this point. Things can change, but I've been tracking payroll week to week, and this should be fairly accurate as we move towards the end of the fiscal year. For the schools, Ingrid, I don't know if you want to say anything or if you want me to.
All right, that never-ending trying to unmute. So I presented to the school committee last week just where we are and where I'm projecting will end 20. One major thing to keep in mind is that the school department budget has about $3.7 million of offsets. The vast majority of that is the circuit breaker, almost $2 million for special education and then various revolving funds and school choice. So, you know, in talking to Dan and Jody, and obviously the school leadership and the school committee, right now, the plan is that we use fewer offsets in FY '20, thus not closing out much of the general fund budget in order to reserve funds for '21. We anticipate higher costs all around, regardless of what we think school is going to look like. We've had, every day we have meetings outlining what PPE we need. Potentially, special education is going to look differently. So there are just so many unknowns right now. I think my recommendation is that, you know, we reserve as much as we can for '21 in anticipation that we will see significant cuts in state aid that would provide us with a buffer to still be able to appropriately educate the students of Westford.
Okay, and moving on down, we have debt service and risk management. Risk management, last time we saw this, had about $400,000 expected for a closeout. However, we didn't make all those budget transfers at the last joint meeting we had. So right now, we're projecting about 90,000 closeout. So overall, to our general fund expenses, we're looking at about 1.2 million as a closeout year-end at this point. So now I'm going to go into the free cash slide to show what our reserves may look like at year-end. Just for reference, July 1st, 2019, we're certified at just under $4.3 million. From that amount, we appropriated, you know, some expenses at the October town meeting, and we have some projected appropriations for the annual town meeting, which will bring the ending free cash balance down to 2.47 million if all those are approved. So we add in the closeout and projections, and we account for the decrease in the local revenues and the deficit for the recreation enterprise. It looks like we'll be starting next year at about $3.2, $3.3 million. There are some other factors that go into this, which I'm not going to bog down this conversation with all those, but it should be relatively close for what we're looking at, at $3.258 million. And lastly, I just want to point out that we do have other reserves. Stabilization and free cash are part of the reserves that we maintain to make sure we have known reserves of at least 5% of our general fund operating budget. Right now, we have 5.5 million in stabilization. We do have our OEBM account of 6.5 million. You know, of course, we have a $75 million associated liability with that. But however, if push came to shove, that money is still there that could be used for retiree healthcare. Capital stabilization, we have 453,000 in there. And of course, in our health insurance stabilization, we have $667,000. So that is the first revenue forecast that we have for you. Next, we have the updated scenario planning that we did with Jody, Ingrid, Andrea, and Avery all set in on to talk about what happens if we see reductions to state aid. So at the top here, you can see that $691,000 deficit that we had already projected, not including state aid. And below it, we have different scenarios here. We have, you know, what happens if we have the governor's budget, which is wishful thinking, but then a 5% decrease, a 15%. wishful thinking, but, uh, and then a 5% decrease, a 15% decrease and a 20% decrease. So, uh, with those associated budget shortfalls with the 5%, we're looking at about 1.7 million shortfall with a 15%, about $3.6 million shortfall and with a 20%, about a $4.6 million shortfall. So what we did is we came up with, uh, tiers of possible budget reductions to, to sort of start planning now, in case these things occur. So the first category here is health insurance. Uh, we're actually going out to bid next month, uh, in July. Uh, we have budget an 8% increase, which is effective November 1st. And just for reference, each point is about $100,000 per month. So when you factor that in from November 1st through June, uh, you know, a, a 0% increase would be about $800,000 savings. Get a five, that's about $300,000 savings and so on. So when we have that information, we can reexamine the, uh, health insurance budget and maybe make some adjustments at the special town meeting. Next up is the, uh, the town and other risk management accounts. Um, you know, we work together to kind of come up with high level reductions that could possibly occur. Um, based on what the CD comes in and how much we need to reduce budgets. Um, the, the cop reserve are comfortable that we could be reduced at 165,000. Gasoline, we see prices going down. We, we, we cut every budget 20% across the town. Uh, meetings and conferences, just wouldn't happen next year. It's, you see, it's about 43,000 with all sorts of other expenses that we grouped together that are very, there are a lot there, so I'm not going to go through them all. But, um, our OPEBs, we could actually reduce, uh, to meet funding at last year's level. Uh, we have personal services, which we're trying to delay until the later tiers here, uh, if we really need to. Uh, there's also the FinCom reserve, which, uh, we haven't been using as much the past three years. So possibly we could, uh, see a reduction there as well. Now, if we do start to see some, um, some layoffs, the, we have to keep in mind that the unemployment insurance will increase in the future. So, um, you know, there is a cost benefit analysis. We'd have to do with that as well. Next up, we have the schools. I'll, I'll kick it over to Ingrid.
Okay, so we did the same exercise with the, um, tier two would be cutting about 500,000 and tier three, a million and tier four, 1.4 there. Again, this is all very fluid, uh, and any reductions would obviously, um, be, you know, further examined for the school committee. And, and this is just a high level exercise right now to start the conversation, which I think, you know, it allows us to be a little more proactive than reactive if the worst comes to worst. So, and honestly, um, even the numbers here, uh, that was from Friday. We've had further discussions starting today, um, or, you know, again, today, looking at the personal services that we could maybe, um, hunt some of those, uh, people into tier three and four rather than right away into tier, um, two. Perhaps, um, on the revenue side, all the way on the bottom, that 110 is for the, uh, special education reserve fund. Perhaps use that more in tier two. Uh, you know, these are all, th- these are scenarios and, um, obviously, like I said, would be, you know, much more vetted and thoughtfully, uh, applied, uh, if we are in the situation that we have to make such cuts. But the idea too was to really, um, you know, look at what directly affects the students and, and try and, uh, you know, we, we took away all of our, you know, meetings and conferences as well. And, uh, utilities of some of those things first before going closer to the classrooms.
Jody?
So I think, um, just in summary, the board of selectmen directed us to go forward to town meeting with the budgets that we had already, you had already supported. But we, what we want, the selectmen, the school committee, the finance committee and the town residents to know is that we have done this exercise and we are ready to react to any reductions that may come our way from the state. We've given this a lot of thought and a lot, you know, a lot of detailed analysis. And, um, we hope we don't have, it doesn't come to this, but we are ready to react quickly. I did get a question, do we need a town meeting vote to reduce these budgets? And no, we do not need a town meeting vote to react to a, uh, reduction in state aid. We can react very swiftly with the board of selectmen and the school committee and the finance committee directing us to do so. Uh, but we would, um, adjust those budgets in October at our next town meeting. So I just wanted to summarize that.
Okay.
Okay. And just to wrap up the summary here, um, we want to show you what our potential reserves would look like in each of these scenarios. Um, typically we like to have a budget that doesn't require one-time funds to, uh, fill that deficit. Uh, and there's these unusual circumstances, I think we have to, you know, consider doing so. And each of these cases, um, you know, with just, uh, having, uh, the state budget, we still have that $691,000 deficit. We'd have to, you know, somehow fund that void at the special town meeting. And then going outwards, uh, you know, when we have budget reductions and varying levels of, um, one-time funds applied to balance the budget in FY21. So here are all those scenarios, but I wanted to let you know what our reserves would look like, uh, if we end up doing this as well. So right now our stabilization balance is 5.5 million, which we saw from the other sheet. Uh, we have an estimated free cash starting balance of about 3.3 million, uh, which we also saw, saw from a previous sheet. And our reserves are about 8.8 million to start, uh, next fiscal year. So if we reduce the funds that we use to balance the budget, and then we also delayed some various articles, uh, from the annual town meeting to October special town meeting. So these aren't set in stone. Adjustments can be made. We'll have to make decisions once we have more information. But if all those, um, delayed articles were funded in October, it'd be about 1.64 million in addition. And also, uh, each year the, the selectmen, uh, give, approve a budget policy, which typically includes about 1.5 million in capital, uh, $400,000, so a nice deficit, about $110,000 or so for the chlorine. And then, uh, we're still, uh, putting money back into the capital stabilization from funds from the 63 main sheet, uh, purchase. So, you know, best case scenario, uh, according to this analysis, we're looking at about 1, 4.16 million in reserves come, uh, July 1st, which is about 1.5 million below. I'm sorry, I said July 1st, come June 30th with all these assumptions, June 30th, 2021, which would put us about 1.5 million below, uh, minimum recommended reserves. You know, the situation gets a little bleaker as we go out and we apply more funds to, uh, offset the budget uh, with a 20% decrease, which is showing is about a 2.8 million below known recommended reserves on June 30th and 21. So these are just our initial estimates based on the, uh, you know, those scenarios that we outlined above.
And I just, you know, that's why we wanted to gray out that area regarding capital, because that is, those are choices that you do as boards and the voters will make. So, um, while that bottom line looks bleak, particularly in the far right, it, you know, that all of those numbers would change based on what the votes of town meeting in that gray area.
Okay. Anything else that, uh, is that it, Dan and Ingrid?
That's it for me right now, yeah.
Okay, um, Jody, anything to add or?
Nope, that's, um, that's the work we've done and, uh, so we're ready to answer any questions. Uh, we, we don't really want to get into the specifics of personnel. Uh, if that comes to that, we, we understand who we're talking about, but, um, we'd rather hold that until, uh, if that happens.
Okay, so I see, um, a couple of questions. Um, Mark, um, you said, um, you have, uh, I believe you have a question and a comment. Mark Cost.
Yeah, I don't, uh, yeah, I don't think I said exactly, exactly one. You know me, there may be more than one that buried it, uh, buried in there. But anyway, first of all, I want to say thank you to, um, the town and the, um, uh, and the town staff for doing this. This is so important as we think about how to manage, um, going forward in what is a very uncertain, uh, period of time. So I appreciate all the work that went through this. Uh, I spent a decent amount of time with Dan this morning, so, uh, it's, it's very helpful. One, uh, thing I'd like to ask if I could, and that is as we now move from this work that's been done to the next work, which is given these amounts that are below minimum recommended reserves of 5%. I think now we need to start thinking about what are some of the things that we might recommend, allow us to fill that gap. So whether that be capital stabilization, whether that be OPEB, whether that be, uh, capital projects, um, while they are one-time in nature, they are relevant and important as we think about, um, potential opportunities. So I would just ask that, um, uh, we begin that stage of, of, um, of planning. So that's my ask. Um, the other question and comment kind of combined, if you will, is what this doesn't do, and no one has the ability to know this yet, is what the incremental cost might be to the schools for the way that the state is dictating how you may have to go back, um, in the fall. Um, and I know that's impossible to guess at this point, but I think we also need to be making sure that as soon as we start getting some hints, uh, and I know there are hints out there already, we start putting together what the ads, uh, may be, um, that may only be partially offset by some of these recommendations that you have here. Um, and I know that there's a number of them. So I know there's still, there, there's been a lot of great work done. There's just some more that I would ask we continue to do. And Andrea, if we can just kind of have this as a standing agenda item every two weeks, if there's nothing to talk about, nothing changed, that's fine. Uh, but I'd like to continue to have this as a standing agenda item until, I don't know when, until it's not necessary anymore.
Until it's not anymore. Um, I, I, yeah, I think this is something that we're going to be looking at throughout the summer. And, um, you know, as you said, if there is a, if there is a meeting where there's nothing new to report, then obviously, you know, we won't be, it won't be an agenda item other than to say nothing new to report. But I think it's an incredibly fluid situation and we just have to continue to monitor it and stay on top of it and adjust and adapt and react as things come down. Um, um, Tom, I see that, um, you have a question. Tom Clay.
I do. I, I saw Avery's hand first though. Andrea, if, if Avery wants to go first.
Oh, thanks, Tom. I just wanted to let people know, school committee will be meeting throughout the summer to keep an eye on these changes as they come out. We have the reopening group and we will also be forming a finance subcommittee for the school committee to be able to work more closely with Ingrid and administration as these things come out. Um, so we can maneuver all the changes.
Great, thank you, Avery. Um, Tom?
Uh, echoing Mark, uh, really excellent work. This was just the kind of scenario planning work I was hoping to see. So thanks everyone for working so hard on that. It's sort of a process question, I guess. So to Mark's point, we're going to be, uh, sort of adjusting, you know, day by day, week by week. We're not going to have the benefit of the normal, broad, inclusive, uh, public processes. We're making some of these choices around, uh, reductions. So, um, I don't know if there, if there could be times that we could, uh, dedicate meetings to reviewing. I guess if we get some information about, uh, about a real forecast in terms of state reduction, if we could make sure we schedule meetings so that in a really condensed form, we can get that kind of public input. Uh, I just, I know that, you know, any cuts will be painful and, uh, just want to make sure we get as much public involvement and transparency as we can. Uh, and the other comment is if there are any revenue items that, I know it's not going to be a great time to talk about new revenue, but, uh, I know we've talked about pay as you throw and other things in the past. It might benefit us early to kind of think about what we might do as a gap fill if we end up in one of these really significant downside scenarios and at least want to consider the possibility of, uh, not digging so deep into our reserves.
Yeah, I think you've said, Tom, you know, everything, if, if we get into one of those really dire scenarios, I think everything's on the table.
Andrea, this is Bill. May I, may I make a, uh, comment?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, and first of all, thank you to all of you for recognizing the uncertainty, uh, that we're going to be dealing with throughout the summer. Uh, that is one of the main, uh, statements that the commission of education has made to us is that we have to really begin to learn to live with uncertainty. He will come up with guidance about the fall, uh, what that will, uh, learning, teaching and learning will look like, but has left open the door for the possibility of changes. Now, our, our reopening committee, uh, and we will have a committee member, a school committee member on that reopening committee also, will be looking at three different scenarios. Uh, if we continue fully remote, uh, if we come back to fully, uh, brick and mortar education. And the most complicated is, uh, hybrid, which, uh, the commissioner at this present time seems to be leaning towards. That has all sorts of complexities, uh, to us, even if, even if we can come back, uh, in a full in-school setting. We have to look not only at the costs associated with that, but also the revenue, potential revenue loss, such as will a parent feel comfortable with their child being on a school bus? Uh, and so do we lose a significant amount of revenue? So there are a number of, uh, of very complex moving pieces that we're going to do our best, uh, at estimating, uh, in terms of the cost, the revenue loss and the service impact to students. So thank you for understanding the complexity of all this.
Okay.
Andrea, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
And so my question is actually for Bill and that has to do with a, if there's a, um, timeline or some idea of when you might have a better, um, idea of what school will look like. And I ask not because I need to know immediately, but thinking about town meeting. I think there will be a lot of questions from residents about why we are not adjusting the budget, before we get to town meeting, given what we know already. But I recognize that you have, you know, so much uncertainty. I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to that timeline in a way that might reassure voters, um, you know, why we need to wait and why it's not prudent to go changing the budget at this late time.
Yes, the commissioner, uh, anticipates coming out with, uh, more substantive guidance about the 2020, 2021 school year, uh, late this month. Uh, he has a 54-member committee at the present time. Um, I'm not sure how quickly a 54-member committee can make decisions, but, uh, they are anticipating, um, coming up with some recommendations to the commissioner towards the end of the month. However, the commissioner has stated unequivocally that it is entirely possible that between the end of June and throughout July and August, if conditions change, his guidance couldn't, could also change. So, uh, we want to be as prepared as we can for any scenario, but it is definitely, uh, a constant moving target.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, um, Ming, Ming Kwan has, uh, uh, submitted a question. Um, and, um, actually Ming Kwan, I'm going to, uh, rather than read your question, um, I'm going to have you ask it, uh, yourself.
Thank you, Andrea. Um, I think that last, uh, last winter, uh, the school committee has gone through like really, really, really difficult, um, um, meetings, serious meetings, like 30, 40 hours, long nights, um, not very pleasant. Um, and then, uh, and then it's, 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 it's said that, uh, the budget on a school is like cutting to the bare minimum. And then, um, any further cut is like just going to be so drastic. So I'm looking into all the scenarios. Going to have a lot of cuts to the programs, um, and the services. So this is very extraordinary times. I asked a question multiple times, I think in public and in private. So, uh, my question, uh, really is, uh, to the select board and then also to the superintendent and the town manager. But, um, have we, are we open to renegotiate the union, non-union contracts? And then to say if we can actually work together to go through the very difficult fiscal situation for the next year, uh, to have a town-wide salary freeze. Uh, a lot of, a lot of private business and they have gone through this already because they have to survive. The same is true for the town. So I know that any conversation like this is not going to, to be pleasant, but are we prepared to do that?
Okay, um, I guess. I guess Avery, could I ask you, did, it's my understanding that the school committee did discuss whether or not to institute a salary freeze as well as your contracts. And I'm wondering if you could state the school committee's position for us.
Absolutely. As Ming Chen knows, we did vote to give salary increases as the town has. We followed guidance as we are one town. We did have significant discussion on whether there should be that kind of freeze. But at this time, we have followed town guidance in continuing with increases.
Jody, do you want to respond?
Sure. I think Ming has brought this up a couple of times and we have five town contracts in place. They are all at a 2% COLA. The schools have, I believe, all their contracts in place at a 2% COLA. I believe the school committee just voted on this recently and voted, I think it was 6-1 with Ming against it to honor those contractual increases. And I think Ming has asked whether we would consider not giving non-union personnel these increases. And I think I feel strongly that it isn't fair to single out non-union because they aren't part of a collective bargaining agreement. We don't have a lot of non-union personnel anyway. I asked Dan what the impact would be. And I believe for the town, it would be $70,000 if we singled out non-union and did not give them a COLA as, as they've been budgeted for. And I believe the figure is very similar on the school side. So I just think, my personal opinion is out of fairness. We don't single out those that we have the ability to just make a unilateral decision and remove their increase. I think some of my non-union people, most of them are department heads and, and most of them have worked harder than they've ever worked throughout this COVID pandemic to make sure that we're delivering the level of services to meet the residents' needs. And so it, I don't think that's the answer. I think if we need to find budget reductions, I'm happy to do so. Back in 2010, I believe, as a town, we decided that we were not going to give COLAs and that was consistent across all town unions and non-union. And in my opinion, that is the way to handle this and not target those that have no say at the table on what you do with their salaries. So that's my personal opinion.
Jody, that's different from the question I'm asking. My question right now is to renegotiate all the union and the long union contract.
Okay, so you're on the school committee and the school committee voted not to do that. I report to the Board of Selectmen and at this point they have not instructed me to do that. So that would be bargaining with 13 unions, I believe, to reduce their COLA, and I've not been given that direction.
And we have not discussed reopening contracts. We agreed to proceed with the contracts as the 2% and to reopen negotiations in the fall with the larger union contracts. Because we were in the middle of negotiations when the pandemic hit.
Right.
You know, just, Andrea, may I just say, just, just quickly, I think a lot of, sometimes we get this question from members of the public of, you know, why can't we renegotiate and look at renegotiating contracts? It does become with chapter 150E of the general law is very difficult because we are required, unlike the private sector, to bargain in good faith with employees. And Ming Chen, I absolutely understand your concern. It's just that we don't have the same leverage when it comes to two parties bargaining or not bargaining as the private sector has.
And I would just say, I mean, from the town side.
Yeah, I'm really concerned about.
Excuse me, Ming Kwan, let me just comment and then I'll get back to you. On the town side, and Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we just finished negotiating five out of our six contracts, right?
Yes, we negotiated this fall and wrapped them up before January. I do have the firefighters, which are the only contract open for fiscal year 21.
But, but my point is, is that we have just finished contract negotiations. They were, you know, as always, you know, they had too many discussions and many meetings. We are in a good place with our unions and I at least for one, don't feel that I want to reopen those kind of negotiations at this point in time. I, I don't get a sense from the board, although I've not talked to my members individually that there's really any appetite to do that. And I would also remind or just recall that in 2010, when we did not give COLA increases to any of our employees and when we froze everybody in 2010, that resulted in our employees falling behind our market basket communities by significant amounts that over the course of years, we had to sort of catch up and backfill. And we've reached that point and I really don't want to see us falling behind again because I believe that that only exacerbates the, the problems we may be having now and the budgetary problems that we may be facing in the future. So Ming Kwan, I will give you, we have one further comment and, and then we have other people who want to ask some questions.
Yeah, sure. My last comment really that I just don't say how those costs will make a school work for the next year. Because we just cannot afford to cut any programs, much as the caution we had in the last winter. So there is no easy answer. Basically, like the lights are up to evil. If I'm making proper words.
So Li Wei has commented and I don't, I will leave Avery or Bill to answer this, but if changes are to be made at the school due to legislation, i.e. students, less students in the classroom, what might be the impact to the school budget under a couple of scenarios? Also related to COVID-19, similarly, does the town incur more costs or less costs during the shutdown? So Avery or Bill, do you want to take the first part of that? And then I think Jody, maybe, or Dan takes the second part.
Sure. You know, there may in fact be some costs associated with a reduced number of students. One of the ideas that the commissioner has come up with is alternating student populations. Some, one configuration might be half the students in one week, half the next week. What we'll have to do is we need to reconfigure all the rooms with desks. They have to be spacing six feet apart. They have to be facing in one direction. And as many of you know, the Abbott School has has small, very small classrooms. That may be a real problem with us. So we may have to modify some spaces at the Abbott. We're also prepared to utilize some of the classrooms, available classrooms at the Millennium. Now that the preschool has moved out to the respective K to two schools in case we need to, for social distancing, accomplish that. We also need to keep a a room that we just met with Jeff Stevens, with Gail Johnson, with Joan Mitchell and Cheryl Coffer today for a couple of hours to talk about safety and health protocols. We also have to devote a, a caring room that we're going to call it, not an isolation room, because that has a terrible connotation to it, but a caring room if a staff member or a child exhibits symptoms of illness. We have to move that child there and staff member has to go home, but the child has to be in the caring room until a parent can come in and pick that child up. Now, if we have several children at the same time, do we need, do I need to go some petitioning in that caring room? And so we also don't know what the impact, as I said, will be if children come back to school according to the commissioner's guidance. How many students will actually be on a school bus? How many will be allowed on a school bus? But how many parents will be willing to put this children on a school bus, even though, you know, it would be disinfected on a nightly basis? And so what does that do to our bus fee revenues? And does the general fund budget therefore have to augment what we have planned initially in terms of a contribution to the to school busing? So there are so many, so many moving pieces here that that's why we have this committee put in place with, with four different subcategories to try and figure out everything. How do we feed students? Do we feed them in their class? Do we keep them in the, in the classroom? Or do we bring down, bring them down to the lunchroom? They can take their masks off according to initial guidance in the lunchroom, but they have to be spaced six feet apart. So do we reduce the number of lunches, reduce the number of children at lunches? Do we therefore increase the number of different lunch times that we have? And how does that impact time and learning requirements? The Department of Education has, they specify 900 hours at the elementary level, 990 hours at the grade six to 12 level on time and learning. But between getting children into school, reconfiguring lunches, reconfiguring classrooms, that's going to be significantly reduced. So you know, we're running towards the challenge, not away from it, but it is quite formidable.
And Jody?
Yeah. So what I would say is, yes, we have reduced expenses since this whole pandemic started. That's why we're able to close out over a million dollars from this year. And we did implement, I implemented, and I believe Bill did too, a spending freeze back when this happened and a hiring freeze. And so for example, I have no assistant building commissioner, which is a full-time benefited position that we did not fill when we promoted Henry to the full position. We had cut conferences immediately. We cut mileage because people were working remotely. So we made a lot of reductions. And as you can see by the contracts on the Board of Selectmen agenda, there's not many. And there were lots of them before. So we've done a lot to to reduce expenses. A big one that I haven't talked about tonight, and I will briefly mention is health insurance. And I've been working with Blue Cross Blue Shield trying to negotiate a huge reduction for this year because people weren't and aren't going to the doctor like they used to. And so I have a meeting coming up to try to get several hundred thousand dollars off of our health insurance this year, which would of course help us. Anyway, so I have not been directed by the Board of Selectmen at this time to lay people off. We are talking about recreation again tonight. But at this point, they have kept people whole. That may change, particularly if the state reduces our our funding. But I think we've done a very good job and I, again, I cannot say enough that the staff has stepped up to the plate and continued the services throughout this. And I, and I am extremely proud of them. So but we have, we've made sacrifices, definitely.
Scott, I see you have a question.
Yeah, we've moved on, so forget it. It'll wait.
Okay. I am not seeing any other questions or comments at this point. So I think, as we have said, as Mark suggested and as I agree, this is just going to be an ongoing agenda item throughout the summer. And we'll continue our, we'll continue our discussions throughout the summer as we continue to get new updated guidance from the state and react and respond accordingly. So I would echo my thanks to to Jody, to Bill, to town staff, to everyone who has participated in gathering all of these facts and figures and all of this information for us. I know it's a tremendous amount of work and I think I speak for everybody and on behalf of everybody when I say thank you to all of you for your continuing hard work on behalf of Westford. And so with that, we're going to move on. FinCom and School Committee, you are welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. But we also understand if you, you know, like to adjourn and get on with the rest of your evening. So I leave that up to the chairs of those committees to decide what they want to do. So.
I like to adjourn the FinCom. Andrea, I like to adjourn the FinCom. Whoever wants to stay, they can stay. Otherwise, they can be off, right? So can someone from FinCom make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. That's, John said that.
Okay. So I'll ask for a word, Li Wei.
You need a second, Harry.
I second that.
Okay.
So, Li Wei?
Hi.
Dennis? Dennis?
I heard two claps. I think that counts.
Okay.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Patricia?
Yes.
Harry? Yes. Christina?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Okay. FinCom is adjourned. Whoever wants to stay, they can. Otherwise, they don't have.
Thank you very much.
This is Megan from the School Committee. I motion that we adjourn as well.
Second.
Seconding.
All in favor, let's see. Alicia?
Aye.
Gloria?
Aye.
We'll come back to Gloria.
She wants to stay.
There she is. Hi, Megan.
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Aye. So we are adjourned. If members would like to stay on, they're welcome.
Thank you to the School Committee as well. Bye all. Okay, moving right along, we are at our 8:20 PM item, which is an update for the community on COVID-19 situation, including the state's phased reopening plan. Let's see, I've already reminded people at the beginning of this meeting, but I'll remind them again that annual town meeting is on June 20th at 9:00 AM on the field at Westford Academy. Jody and I and the moderator during our most motion session last week had a discussion with town council as to what happens if it rains or if it's, you know, 90 degrees at seven o'clock in the morning and we decide we're not going to hold town meeting. How do we, how can we adjourn that? And what we were told is that what is supposed to happen is that the moderator contacts all of us and we all have a discussion and make a decision whether or not to postpone town meeting. What town council then recommended, obviously with the permission of all of you, is that if you would like me to authorize me to make that decision with the moderator, along with Jody's advice, you can do that and you all won't be getting phone calls at 6:30 or 7 o'clock in the morning on Saturday morning. And you can leave it to us to make that decision. So.
Make a motion to authorize Andrea to make that decision on our behalf.
Tom, I think you're muted. Oh, okay. Go ahead. Okay. And just for everyone's information, the meeting would be continued until Monday, June 22nd at 7:00 PM on the field at the academy. So we have a motion.
I like it.
We have a motion in a second. Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the next item has to do with the citizen petition articles that are on the warrant, articles 12, 15, 13, 14, and 18. As I think Jody presented and advised us last, at our last meeting, and also as we have spoken to all of the petitioners themselves, they are in agreement that the article is being dismissed. However, it is up to town meeting, whether or not that actually happens. However, it is up to town meeting whether or not that actually happens. But, um, in light of the fact that when we, uh, voted, um, Jody, do you want to interrupt me? Is that why you're raising your hand?
Yes, I'm sorry, but before you go too far, I want to mention that just tonight I did hear from the petitioner of Article fifteen, which is the, um, examining the, the, uh, WCAT memorandum, Ray, uh, and he does not want to have his dismissed. He wants it, um, continue or dismissed but continued to the October town meeting. So I just want to clarify that.
Okay.
That is a change from what I had been told before. So it's, we, so it's twelve to be dismissed entirely and fif- thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and eighteen until October.
Okay.
So I'll make that motion if you need that motion, Andrea.
Right, but before we get there, Tom?
Yep.
I think what we actually have to do is we took positions in all of these articles back, back when. And so it was Town Council's, uh, opinion that we should, um, re-vote our positions in light of, uh, whether or not we are supporting or not supporting dismissal of these articles. So I think that we probably should vote them individually as opposed to a whole. Yes?
Uh, hi again. I wanted to mention that I think you're also supposed to say it is your recommendation to dismiss it, but to, um, you, you're committing to put it on the October special town meeting warrant with no additional signatures required at that time.
Right. Yes.
Okay, so Andrea, you'd like a motion first then to dismiss Article twelve?
So, yes, um, Article, yes, Article twelve, and that's being dismissed completely, right, Jody?
Second.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
Aye. And then I think for the remaining ones, Jody, and help me out here, we can probably do that in one motion. Um, and the motion being to dismiss with the understanding that these articles will be brought back at the October or whenever our next town meeting is held, um, without any additional signatures.
That's correct.
So moved.
Okay, Mark?
Second.
Um, Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
And I. Okay. Um.
Um, Andrea, there's a question from Christina about Article eighteen. Do you see that?
I do. FinCom took a position on Article eighteen. Do we need to re-vote? Um.
Jody's got an answer.
Yeah, Jody has an answer.
No, they don't need to re-vote. I think this is really up to the Board of Selectmen to make this recommendation. All the petitioners are in agreement with what you're doing, so they can just hold. And if they want to, uh, re-vote in the fall, they're welcome to do so then.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think that's, don't see any other questions. All right, um, so our next item is to review information provided by Jim Dwayne regarding summer recreation programs, survey results, the ability to hold summer twenty twenty recreation programs, and impact on projected Recreation Enterprise Fund. Hey, Jim, you out there?
I think I'm unmuted now.
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, so yes, you are.
Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen of the jury, I have some information I'd like to present to you. Um, now, in, in all seriousness, uh, I appreciate Madam Chair, thank you. And, uh, Select Board, thank you for the opportunity. Jody and I had started discussions about summer recreation programming and operations several weeks ago. And we started our approach to those conversations internally pretty much about the time that school decided that, uh, the state decided schools weren't going back in session. So I'm going to try to be succinct. I'm condensing a lot of information that, as we've all discussed tonight, is changing rapidly, even up to the minute sometimes. Um, so over the last six to eight weeks, I, so I, first and foremost, I've provided you a memo. I provided you the results of a survey that we put out to the community to gain some insight into what they thought they would want or need, as well as provided you with some anticipated and projected revenue and expense information. And all of that plays into kind of how we got here today. So if you'll indulge me for, I think, probably two minutes, I'll give you a quick recap. And then, um, I can take questions. Does that work for you, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
So over the last six to eight weeks, uh, our planning has included very extensive internal discussions to talk about and look into, you know, what is it that we do? What's our core competency? What's our mission? And what do we think our staff is best capable of handling as we look to what the community needs? As we talked about what the community needs and what they want, our interpretation was that reopening the economy is going to require some form of day-long summer programming that gives parents the flexibility to have coverage for their children while they try to navigate this, uh, you know, hybrid work-from-home reopening schedule. Um, to confirm that, we thought it would be a good idea to put a survey out to the community. We did that. We kept it very, very simple, and the goals of that survey were to really just get a feel for, is there a need or a desire for programming? Do people want some type of a commitment programming, like a week-long commitment? Do they want a more of a flexible daily commitment? Or are they looking for more of a one-to-two-hour type programming that provides even greater flexibility? Um, I think the overwhelming response from the three hundred-plus survey responses that we got was in the forty-plus percentile that people are looking for some type of day-long programming and some type of very flexible programming. So with that, we've been interacting with, uh, Jeff Stevens and the Health Department very regularly to look at the updated guidance, to anticipate what that guidance is going to mean, and then try to align our current planning with the guidance. The guidance has changed dramatically over the course of the last several weeks, and I think we've managed to adapt, uh, quite readily with the input and help from Jeff. We've been meeting regularly with recreation professionals from across the state because, shockingly, as we've all discussed tonight, none of us is in a unique situation right now. Uh, everybody in the recreation world is trying to figure out what are they going to do? How are they going to do it? And what are the requirements going to be? And, uh, we've also worked with Dan and Eric to, you know, come up with the projected and anticipated revenues and expenses. As part of those conversations, I met with the Park and Recreation Commission on June first. We had some extensive conversation about the plan that I've put in front of you. Um, as of June first, that was the most updated information we had. The Park and Rec Commission voted, uh, four zero zero to support the planning that we had done and to support continued planning in that direction. With the understanding that there would be additional conversations pending with both the Board of Health and the Board of Selectmen, or Select Board. Um, so last night, we took all of the feedback that we've gathered to this point, and the Park and Recreation Commission met jointly with the Board of Health and Jeff Stevens to speak with them about our proposed programming. Um, they were very supportive of our commitment and our approach to running summer program. They were also, you know, appropriately concerned with making sure that we do it in a safe manner for both the participants and the staff, and that we align that program with whatever the state is requiring. Um, to that end, based on the conversations we had last night, we are aware that we're going to be required to meet some increased healthcare protocols in order to operate a program of that nature during the COVID nineteen pandemic. And specifically, what that means is we're going to have to secure the services of a healthcare consultant, and we're going to be required to hire two healthcare supervisors. And those healthcare supervisors would be onsite during all of the operating hours for the program to oversee the healthcare logistics. Based on the thirty-five-page document that the state released for guidance, a checklist that helps us narrow down some of the things we need to be prepared for, and a lot of interaction with the state and Jeff and the Health Department, we think that we can do something meaningful, something safe, and something aligned with the guidance. But the challenge that we were made aware of last night creates some very significant potential impacts to the budget because none of those positions were included in the original forecasts. And it also presents some challenges to the proposed timeline because we don't know how to go about, we don't know how long it's going to take us to source these individuals and whether or not we're actually going to be able to secure their services as needed. That's not to say we're not going to try. Jeff's already provided me with the contact for a healthcare supervisor, a healthcare consultant, rather. I played phone tag with, um, this woman this afternoon. We've agreed to connect tomorrow. I'm hoping that she can help me understand the expense associated with both the healthcare consultant service as well as the expenses to anticipate for healthcare supervisor. And, uh, assuming we can overcome those obstacles, our plan is to move forward and run a program that we think the community needs as the service provider. Notwithstanding the fact that all of this could be impacted by our ability to secure those services, or it could be impacted by what the, uh, what the budget situation becomes based on needing to provide those services. With that, I can stop and take questions, comments, or have conversation related to the summer program that we are proposing. Um, or I can continue and update you on some of the other things that aren't, uh, quite as challenging.
Uh, why don't we stop there? Because I think that's probably a good stopping point for now. And I suspect that, uh, several of us have, uh, uh, questions, given your presentation, uh, Jim, particularly the last part of it that I think is coming out of the blue, uh, for, for all of us. Um, so, um, Mark, I, I saw you immediately put your hand up.
So first of all, Jim, thank you, and for those who helped you put this all together, you know, similar to the exercise the town and the schools did on our previous discussion. I know this wasn't easy. Um, and very much appreciate all the work that's gone into this, but, uh, I shouldn't say but. So my concern is that lasts in account. I don't know.
Somebody needs to mute themselves because we're getting a lot of feedback right now.
So I don't know how relevant this financial information that we have is, Jim, given what you just stated. So if you need to come back in a couple of weeks and update us based on whatever just happened, um, Andrea, maybe that's an opportunity. We probably don't have to digest it all tonight. Um, but, um, so Jim, that's really my only question.
Um, I guess I just, and I agree. I'm s- I agree with you, Mark. Um, I guess I really need to have a better understanding of, of these positions, um, and what, what they entail. Um, you know, is this, uh, how, is the state expecting that every summer program, every camp have, um, a, have a healthcare consultant and two healthcare supervisors onsite at every, every site? Are these people supposed to be there, you know, for all of the operational hours? Um, how many of such people exist in the state that, you know, they could even be hired? Is it possible to use anybody, uh, any employee here in the town, um, to serve in that position? And this is a question for you and Jody to explore, um, uh, or, or not. So I guess, um, those are just sort of immediate questions about the positions that come to my mind sitting here thinking right now off the top of my head. I bet if you gave me an hour, I'd think of a whole lot more. But, um, I, 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 I agree, Mark, with, with your statement and the questions that I'm posing, and I think probably questions some of you others have. It may make sense not even to discuss this part of the program tonight and wait until two weeks. Um, Jody, before you respond, um, Tom, Elizabeth, or Scott, do you guys have questions or comments?
My questions would be similar, and Andrea as well. Um, just trying to understand this for all camps because one of our reasons for continuing with the rec program was recognizing that as people go back to work, they will need childcare and will need to get it up and running pretty quickly. And I think, um, you know, our board was committed to being part of that solution for families and wondering, um, you know, just to help families understand what to expect with camps coming up. If every camp is going to have to go through this, if it's ten kids or five hundred kids. Um, and then also knowing we have other programs in town, so does this apply? This is a broader question perhaps for Jeff Stevens. Anyone who's running a camp, um, for any period of time? I know SSPA has students coming onsite. Will they also be looking to hire these individuals? And will that be a requirement for all camps for our Board of Health to enforce?
Even Rodenbush, is it going to be required for, you know, private corporations like Rodenbush?
Hi, this is Jeff Stevens. Uh, how you doing, everybody?
Hi, Jeff.
Uh, I just wanted to chime in on this piece, uh, which is, uh, agreeably a significant change from how rec programs have operated in the past. Uh, I can tell you this, that every single camp in the Commonwealth has to follow the camp regulations, which has required the healthcare consultant and healthcare supervisors. Rec programs typically have not had to do that. This year, the guidance has changed through the Massachusetts Child and Youth Serving Programs reopening approach guidance document, which is now requiring that. That's not something we were expecting, but it is in the guidance. And it's something, at least for this year in COVID nineteen, we're going to have to address. But every camp that has come through Westford has had these things in place. In fact, PDA, it's West, has operated as the healthcare consultant for many of these camps that we have. So this isn't a new challenge. It's an existing one that has now been placed upon our rec program that's new.
It's a new challenge for our rec program, Jeff. And, and a new challenge for us as a town in terms of expense. Um, Jody?
Yeah, one thing.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jody.
One thing I might mention is that, um, I think Dan and I believe that these new required positions may be reimbursable by the CARES Act. They probably are. Um, that's, you know, the two point one million, and it's COVID-related. So, uh, you know, Jim did call me today. Uh, it was late, you know, news because the meeting was last night. We haven't had a chance to analyze all this. If you'd like him to come back, that's fine. I mean, the clock is ticking on starting camps, as you know. But, um, but we certainly can look at that and see who's available, maybe. I mean, I don't know, Jeff, if, if one of our school nurses would qualify. You know, I haven't had a chance to talk to Jeff, so we can explore all that. But it probably is reimbursable.
And if, if PD West is, uh, already acting as a healthcare consultant for, uh, camps, it may be that they will be willing to act as a healthcare consultant, um, for the town's, uh, program as well. Elizabeth?
They may be willing to do that, but I managed to identify a, uh, a pediatrician that happens to be a member of our Medical Reserve Corps that may be willing to help out, just don't understand yet what degree she'll be able to do that. So I made the initial call today in order to try to overcome this. So we're, we'll start the process as fast as we can.
Sure. Elizabeth?
Yes, so Jim, I was wondering if you could speak to how your plan utilizes the staff members that we have? Will it utilize everyone that's currently employed by rec? Will we be, um, bringing back? I see the counselors. Um, you know, how many additional summer helpers would we have? Or is this a plan that we would still have some, um, we'd have some individuals not fully utilized?
So the approach that we've taken right now, because we're planning to operate two beaches, and there's going to be some, uh, requirements associated with those beaches in terms of compliance or adherence to the new COVID guidelines, we plan to use some of our recreation staff to oversee the beaches and the remaining recreation staff to handle the work associated with small groups as identified in the state's guidance, which is groups of twelve, um, maximum of ten children, a maximum group of twelve, including staff. And we are planning for a group size of twelve, which includes the staff. Uh, and we're planning to use our existing recreation staff to be the leaders for each of those groups of twelve. And we think, and we think that accommodating between forty and sixty children. And we think, and we think that accommodating between 40 and 60 children, assuming we get that many registrations. That that's about what we can accommodate with the. Length of day requirements for, you know, shift changes and breaks. To be able to shift through a day and remain compliant with the regulations. We think that we have enough remaining staff to cover that, but we would still have to supplement that staff with some counselors. Or some hourly summer staff in order to be completely compliant and have the appropriate staff to ensure safety that we. We need to ensure as we run these programs.
Okay, thank you.
Scott?
Forgive if I missed it, Jim, but. When you think about our first responders. You know, and changes to. Process and gear when dealing with things like CPR. How are our lifeguards affected by that? Do we have extra precautions for them or or not?
So we would have. Some additional, you know. PPE associated with lifeguards. At this point, lifeguards would only be utilized. In connection with our day-long summer programming and swimming activities associated with that. The town of Westford for several years has not staffed lifeguards at the public beaches. Public beaches are swim at your own risk. With no public lifeguards provided. So we're not. In the situation where we have to plan for those staff members to have additional protections.
Okay. Thanks.
Tom?
So Jody, if I understand you correctly, if the additional positions that sort of sprung out of the woodwork last night are covered or reimbursable. The economics that we're looking at here in these analysis that Jim's presenting. Does represent what we think reality is. We've got more requirements, but those will be paid a different different pot. Is that correct?
I think so.
So if that's the case, and we're. Rapidly approaching, I'm thinking if in two weeks we're voting on supporting this or talking about supporting this or not for a program that may start. What, six or seven days after that? I think if we're looking at representative economics here, then at least I'd be comfortable. Directionally saying yes, I mean, providing a back-to-work support for up to 60 kids, providing some coverage for the beaches. That seems like the right. The right approach for us.
Um. Mark?
Yeah, so I would agree with Tom. Is there, you know, is there a way? To get feedback, Jody, on. Whether those costs would be covered? You know, so we can make it just, you know, contingent tomorrow when you find out that that is covered.
I mean, I I'm pretty sure it is covered. We have to fill out an application to submit, but. Like overtime wages for the fire department related to COVID are covered. And so I think it's pretty much any. Any char, any charges, whether they're personnel or expense. Are supposed to be covered. And so. That would be, I can double check tomorrow and you can make a contingent, but we're pretty confident.
Yeah, I think I agree. I mean, I think we, if we make a contingent upon, you know, confirmation that. These expenses are reimbursable. Then that will give. Jim and Jeff the ability to move forward and to, you know, put into place. The requirements and the staffing that we need to open, you know, summer programming.
Andrea, this is Jim, if I could add a comment?
Of course.
So we did discuss this with Dan as we were going through these projections, and I was gonna get to that point, but we got there quicker than I was able to. That's fine. Dan, Dan and I did discuss this. We, Dan did reach out to the town's auditor. And had some initial communication with them, and the initial feedback that we got was that, yes, COVID compliance positions would be reimbursable under the CARES Act. So we're confident that the staffing plan that we came up with before we even knew any of that. And the projections that we showed you, they're at least representative, Tom, to your point. There may be an opportunity for these to be offset a little bit more. There may. Be a need for us to go a little bit more heavily with some of the staffing based on the guidance that specifically says. These types of programs will staff heavily in order to be. Responsive to any needs that arise during the day to ensure safety and appropriate staff coverage. But at the end of the day, we feel like these are very representative numbers and provide the right framework for decision making.
Thank you.
Do you, do you need an emotion then, Andrea, for this?
Is there a motion to be made here?
I'm happy to make the motion. Jody, is that what we're looking for? A motion to support this plan as described? So I'll make the motion.
Yep, and you can add to submit for reimbursement. We'll do that anyway. You don't have to, but that's that's fine.
Okay, why don't we add that? So. A motion to support the programs as presented. With an understanding that we will. Apply for reimbursement for all COVID, all appropriate COVID-related expenses.
So second. Um, Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Get to work, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
That's it? Good night. Thank you all. I appreciate your patience.
We appreciate yours as well. Um, so our next item is a request to approve. Policies for the procedures and rules for the use of outdoor space for food and alcohol service. Jeff Morissette, are you out there?
Good evening. Jeff Morissette, your Director of Land Use Management.
Hi, Jeff. How are you doing? Thank you for hanging in here with us.
Thank you. Tonight, we're asking the board to consider approving a draft policy. That's in support of authorizing restaurants to create or expand outdoor seating areas. This language was based on a draft from town council with additional input from the building, fire, health, planning. Police and town clerk departments. So in my opinion, and I think this is widely supported, it's it's critical that we implement such a policy like this for our local businesses. As soon as possible, and every day matters. So if you were to approve a policy similar to this. This would allow the planning department to issue decisions that would authorize these outdoor seating areas. Subject to the satisfactory reviews from the aforementioned departments. And that would help ensure. That issues such as food, social distancing, access, safety, accessibility, and alcohol license requirements would be adhered to. We'd also like you to consider giving your blessing. To waiving any fees associated with tent permits or any other such minor permits if it's related to these temporary authorizations for the outdoor seating. And these are temporary approvals. It typically would run through to November 1st unless a governor's order changes that timeframe. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm just trying to keep it brief for you folks.
Tom?
Thanks, Jeff. I know that the business community is eager to get clarity, so I know this helps. Have you gotten any feedback from? Some of the businesses that this would govern about? How they perceive this in terms of, does it make sense to them, basically?
We've had a lot of favorable support from them. You know, they've all heard, you know, for the governor's orders, they could start yesterday, so we're just trying to. Get this happening as soon as possible. So if someone had an existing outdoor seating area, they could continue to use the outdoor seating area as long as they complied with. Social distancing requirements. If they didn't have an outdoor seating area. And it's new and they don't serve alcohol, if you adopted a policy tonight, we could follow through with this. Then the next category is if the establishment serves alcohol. In addition to needing to modify or amend their alcohol license, they would need that permission from you folks. In addition to this other approval based on the policy.
Thanks.
Other questions?
So you need a motion to.
I think approve the policy.
Prove the policy.
Approve the policy.
They're moved.
Second? Is there a second? Okay. Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi. So then I think next on our agenda is we've got.
Andrea, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
About waiving those minor fees, is the board amenable to that?
Make them inter with the, any ancillary fees associated with the just adopted policy.
Second.
Okay. I'm getting bored. I'm going to mix it up. Scott?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Hi.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
Hi.
Yes. And thank you, Jeff, for reminding me.
So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I'm uncomfortable. I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay. Next is now that we've approved the policy, we have a list of. Restaurants that are looking. To open and expand their seating arrangement for outside dining, and that also permits them to serve alcohol. And let me, let me just read the list, okay? And the list is Ruamchuk Inc. Doing Business as Asian Plus Restaurant, Westford BFW, Matt Awanaki Post, the H. Fletcher Club Athletic and Social Club, Aviva Caccina. Nabnassin American Legion Post, Stony Brook Fishing Game, Chung's Kitchen Inc. Doing Business as Soul Kitchen, and Feng Yu. Doing Business as Karma Restaurant and the 99 Restaurant. So is there a motion to approve?
So most.
Second.
Okay. Scott?
Just one more question.
I'm sorry, Scott, you had a question. Go ahead.
So as I recall, when I went through all the comments from the various. Town departments. Some of these settlements had met conditions, some actually had things outstanding. So should we vote contingent upon fulfillment of outstanding items?
Yes, we should. Thank you. So with that contingency on the motion. All those. Elizabeth?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Hi. Okay. And then our final item under this, under this section is to request. An increase the spending limit on the fiscal year 2021 coronavirus COVID-19 expense account to $500,000. Jody, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, basically, you already did this up to 100,000, and that has been spent. So. We don't want to keep coming back for you. This is money that will, or these are expenses that will be reimbursed by the CARES Act. But this allows us to deficit spend for these purposes. So that's why we raised it to 500 on our way to 2.1 million.
I was just going to ask the question, do we have a limit in terms of how much we can be reimbursed under the CARES Act?
2.1 million. At this point.
And do we have a sense of how much we have, what our expenses are to date?
So the expenses that we've had out of this account are a little, little over 100, just slightly. But, you know, we're looking at the computers that we've had to purchase, things like that. I mean, one of the rules is that you. Can't put in something you already budgeted for. So we have to be a little careful, but I think we're going to see whether the school computers we have purchased and the town computers and so on can qualify. We're working with Ingrid from the schools and all department heads on these expenses. So the. It just allows us to deficit spend.
Okay, I just, you know, I think it's important to sort of keep track of, you know, where we are and what we're spending money on and, you know, so. So we don't run out.
We are, we are keeping very close track on every penny. And we can report periodically to you on this too, but.
I think that would be helpful. Mark?
Yeah, so I was just going to say, I did receive a spreadsheet, and I think we all did on the. Where the first 100 and 1,000. Went, and it is very detailed, Paul, and most of it's Paul's, and it's, of course, he's done a great job of keeping keeping track of it. So I do think it's smart to continue with that and report out every once in a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, we designated Paul Fox as the PPE kind of coordinator for this, but, you know, definitely our town accountant, Dan. They're all involved in this, but Paul keeps the spreadsheet mostly on PPE for us.
Okay. I think we had a motion and a second, but we didn't vote. Is that right? Clerk, is that right?
I don't believe we had a motion.
I don't think you had a motion yet.
Well, then can I have a motion?
Are you testing me right now?
Yes.
I'm doing very well.
And you did very well, okay? You passed the test.
I'll make a motion to increase lending limit to $500,000 for the purposes of COVID-19.
Second.
Second.
Um. Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
All right. Moving right along. To old and, yeah?
We need to vote.
Oh, I, sorry. See, you are paying attention.
That's smart. You passed all three.
All right, moving right along to old and new business. A update on the status of the construction of the asphalt plant located in Newport Materials and the status of the baseline air quality testing by the Westford Health Department. Jeff Stevens.
How are you doing, everybody? So you should have received a memo on. Our most recent update, and I'll just give it to you in a nutshell. The asphalt plant is essentially built and they are projecting. That they will start producing asphalt the third week of June. We've done our preliminary baseline testing about a year ago on air quality and noise. And we did it in May of last year, anticipating they were going to be opening in August. Between August and November last year, and that never happened. So we do have those reports, and we were, we've been in contact with the contractors that did that work for us. So at this point, once the plant opens and they are fully operational. We will consult with GZA and Aaron Noise, which are the two contractors we used. On when an appropriate time to do our second round of testing will be. So once we, once they're up and running and they've dialed it in, we'll then do that secondary. Post-production test. Does anybody have any questions about the facility and what's happening?
Mark?
Yeah, so it's not really a question. It's more of a request. So I think once it's open and you've done the second level of testing, I would suggest the same thing with. With Jeff Morissette and the memo that he provided as well. Who can get, have a full review. Of what the air and noise pre. Opening were and what they are after. As well as their compliance from the, on the planning board side of everything. I think it would be important to have just a very thorough. Pre and post in public. So that residents can be aware.
I'm happy to do that, and what I will do is, once we do our post-testing. I will ask both of our contractors if they can present their findings. Where they are the experts. On on their, on their results, and I'll have them present to the board of selectmen, with the select board.
Thank you. And Jeff Morissette, I know that you had submitted a memo to us as well.
Hi, Andrea. Thanks. Yes, so just to give you a quick update. We are presently reviewing all the various conditions of approval, and there's quite a few of them, as you may recall, perhaps 150 or so in the settlement documents. What I could say is that they're very close to satisfying all those conditions of approval, and I do anticipate receiving an as-built plan by the end of this week. And as Jeff mentioned, they they are hoping to be operational by the end of the third week of June. So in the interest of being upfront, there is one curveball or chicken and egg situation. And that is they are almost. and that is, they are almost done with all of the site improvements, except for one thing, and you guessed it, it's asphalt that they have to lay down right in front of their facility to get access to their facility. So unfortunately, this is not one of those items that was, you know, thought about in deeply when crafting those decisions, and there could be a couple of ways to interpret that, either strictly or not. And there is a lot of gray area, so we try to think, we're trying to be fair and consistent and operate in good faith. We try to think, what would we have done if we had thought about it when crafting the decision? And then, is that consistent with the intent of all the decisions and settlement documents? So in my opinion, I'd like to think that what we would have done is say, hey, prove to us that all the conditions are satisfied, and all the work is done, with the exception of the extension of the driveway to go through the asphalt plant itself. Prove to us all of that, that's the only item, and then, my preference, unless ordered otherwise, would be to allow them, when they have to do batch testing, to bring their plant to operational status, is to, as part of that batch testing, just continue to generate and do their own paving at their site. I do think that is consistent with the intent of the decisions, because the, the one consistent thing was to strive to minimize any unnecessary truck traffic going on to Groton Road. And certainly that would, it's better to have a few trucks on site, staying there and taking care of it, rather than having, before a plant is even operational, you know, many asphalt trucks coming in to the site before they can even operate. And during such a time, they would not be allowed to export any material, they would still have to provide a final as-built and get all the sign-offs, they couldn't operate their business, but it would, I think, keep a lot of unnecessary truck traffic from happening. I did speak with two of the planning board members, the Chair and Vice Chair, who were the only two members who remained from during that friendly permitting process, and they thought it was a reasonable approach, and, and they agreed. Because at the end, you know, the only thing that differs is that we would have far less truck traffic prior to the plant becoming operational. So we think it's fair, and we just want to point that out. The other thing I want to mention is, as we're going through all these conditions of approval, we are, we pledge to the planning board that we are going to take that information, put it on the website. We also have been generating some reports that summarize all of the vehicle trips going in and out of the site for all of 2020, and we're going back to do that as far as we can for 2019 as well, and then we plan to update that on a monthly basis going forward. And of course, during early operations, we're dedicating not insignificant amount of staff time to spot checking and testing and, and watching all those situations, and we'll be providing updates on that as well. So I don't know if you have any questions?
I think that sounds great. So Scott?
I just want to say, Jeff, thank you to you and your staff, because this has been a, you know, a very controversial issue, and I think it's very, very important that we be transparent with everything that goes on there. So I'm very happy to hear that you're, you know, taking that, that care to make sure that we monitor and report back to town. Very, very happy, very impressed with that. And I tend to agree that, you know, if you think about the concerns with the plant from the neighbors, it was number one, you know, fumes and odor and, and the health implications of that, but number two was traffic. So I think your solution is correct. Minimize the truck traffic going in and out if we can.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Moving right along, we have, I guess, a request we have to approve and sign the June 30th, 2020 town election warrant. So I think we need a motion to approve and sign the town election warrant.
Second.
Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Scott?
You're still laughing, either way. Hi.
Yes. Jody, logistics, do we have to all come by and sign the warrant to Town Hall in the next day or so?
Yes, you, you can sign it actually when you come in to sign the bands.
Okay. That was a gentle reminder.
To do by Thursday at 2:00 if possible, but yes, we will have that ready for you too. Thank you.
Do we just contact Patty when we're gonna be there and have, and have somebody...
You know, I gave you Sam's number today, and I think Alyssa's, so I can resend that to you tomorrow, but either one would be fine, and they'll bring out the documents.
Great.
Just bring your mask, bring your mask and your pen.
Yep. Okay, and now we have a request to appoint election officers for terms to expire on July 31st, 2021. Is there a motion to approve, to appoint election officers?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Scott, so you don't have to be late. Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Aye. So the next one is request to approve 2020 annual reappointments for committees and board members as listed in the meeting packet. I have one, I think, comment about that. I'm wondering, in light of the fact that on the town meeting warrant is a request to reorganize the Affordable Housing Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust Committee into one committee, do we want to, and, and town meeting is on June 20th, and terms run through June 30th, do we want to take those out for now to wait and see what town meeting does? Because if town meeting votes to reorganize, then we're gonna be reappointing or appointing a new committee.
Actually, doesn't that have to go to the state? I don't, it's getting late, I'm getting a little gray here, but I believe that has to go to the state, so it will be probably several months, or maybe years, before we get that approval. So you might want to appoint, and then we revisit?
Okay. I didn't realize that it had to go to the state. If it has to go to the state, then yeah, we should reappoint, because who knows when the state will act on it? So, so is there a motion to, to approve the 2020 annual reappointments?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Aye. Elizabeth?
Aye.
And Scott?
Hi.
Okay. And the last item under old and new business is the request to approve the fiscal year 2021 tax bill stuffer, which contains information regarding stormwater billing. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
Aye. We have minutes for approval, we just have one set of an executive session minutes of May 5th, 2020, but not for release. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Scott?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Aye. Any board reports or updates? Seeing none. Jody, Town Managers' report.
First thing I'd like to do is just update you on the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Plan, and if, if the Board remembers, the town received $36,000 last summer to develop this plan, and update the Hazard Mitigation Plan, which we've worked over the past 10 months on, and it's due to the state June 30th. We are welcoming people to take a look, public comment, it is on our website, if you go to westfordma.gov and go to Land Use as the department, it's right there with a big, big title. So there is a public listening session on June 18th at 10:30, there is, you can click on the link on this, or you can go on that website, and we're looking for public comment, so please join us. Secondly, at the last meeting, Elizabeth, who seems to have disappeared, asked about the follow-up on the 41, 42, there she is, Lowell Road, and whether the Conservation Commission was looking for, for the Board of Selectmen to take action, and they are not, they are not interested in pursuing those parcels. So if the Board, if it pleases the Board, I will notify the Adams family that they may go ahead and proceed with the sale of those lots.
Do you need a vote, Jody?
No.
Okay.
But, I mean, I'm, you know, is that what you'd like me to do?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Everybody's nodding? Okay. Sure. And then lastly, I have two contracts to approve. One is a new contract beginning May 26, 2020, and ending June 30, 2023, with our Police Chief Tom, Tom McInnany. You did come up with terms in the executive session, he has agreed to your terms, and so this would be an open session vote to approve that contract.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. So, okay, Tom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Elizabeth?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
And then, there's one more, right, Jody?
Yep, and then, an amendment to a contract with TEC Inc. for the Littleton Road Widening Project in the amount of $1,885,000 from the Route 110 gift accounts.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Scott?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Mom?
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Aye. Just before, I, I just want to make one final comment before we get to correspondence and adjournment. As is evidenced tonight in our meeting, all of our town staff has worked really, really hard to put together information for us for this meeting, and I know how hard they have all worked to get us this information, and it was really, you know, it was detailed, it was specific, it was exactly what we were looking for. So on behalf of the Board, I would like to thank all of the staff who worked on putting our materials together for tonight's meeting, and also to thank them for their continued hard work throughout this COVID-19 pandemic. We all know how hard you're working, and we all appreciate all of your hard work and dedication on behalf of our town. So thank you to everybody tonight. Scott?
I just wanted to add one thing, because I've been to do it before, and now you're giving us a segue. I actually want to acknowledge John Rivas, because for the Community Garden, he has the most ingenious gate-opening gizmo. I don't know where he, where he got it from, but you can poke that thing with any instrument you want, and it pops open and it closes like a, like a charm, and I, I gotta thank that guy, because I've never seen it like before, and it works so well. So shout out to John right now. Hope, hope there's a patent on it, because it's great.
Great. Jody?
I will pass that along, I have a meeting with him on Thursday, but I'd also like to, to do a shout-out, because they got the fields ready, and the fields are, today, all the ball leagues were notified that the fields are open, and, you know, I, I think it's great, we kept them working all this time, and, and the fields, I think, are in really good shape, so, thank you.
Again, thank you to, you know, whatever your contribution has been to keep our town running, you know, parks, recreation grounds, you know, the department heads, whomever, everybody, you know, we are incredibly grateful to all of you. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to waive reading correspondence?
Moved. So moved.
Second?
Second.
Yeah, okay. Aye. Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Scott?
Hi.
Would you do a adjournment?
Second.
And Scott?
Hi.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Hi.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, thank you for hanging in there with us tonight, thank you, Westford. Stay safe, and good night.
Good night.